Did it offend you if I just grabbed a chunk off of there?
No. Bread's meant to be torn.
She is on. Okay, and so, alright.
Good hearing.
Well, we've got to go. She's second. Get the other person coming in for that letter. Okay, friends are all for me. And if he doesn't show up, we'll bring him.
Might tell me when you want me to go in.
Okay?
Set her up.
Alright.
Yeah, we can start.
Okay. We've got a corner, we might as well get started here. Alright. We will begin our work session. Mr. Eastman, you are up.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the invitation for allowing us to come back. It was at least two months, maybe three months ago. Was here initially.
If you need it.
Questioning about the opening of that office that we shared with the Weaver-Morgan Health Department. And also mentioning the opioid funding that comes to the counties. I think it's just under fourteen thousand that Morgan County is getting. Initially, at least. I think there are some additional talks that are going on with some of the pharmaceutical companies. But at least the initial is the under fourteen thousand. And we wanted to be able to present to the council what we think would be good use, the way to spend that, and how we can actually use some of Weaver Human Services funding that's set aside to match that. We were also watching at the time to see how the legislature ended, to see if there was an additional state opioid funding that could be matched. We're not, we haven't seen the whole rollout of that yet, but we don't think there's anything kind of at the, at least for the coalitions that we're going to recommend, that could be matched on this. There are other things that are on larger scale with MAT, medication-assisted treatment in the jail. And we are watching that for both Weaver and Morgan counties on inmates that would be taken into the jail that would need to have medication-assisted treatment. So we may be able to match some of that. It would benefit both Weaver and Morgan counties. So I'm just going to turn time over to Susanna Burt, who is over our prevention programs. She's going to talk a lot more about explaining what we do with coalition building and hopefully see if that appeals to you. Paul.
Hi, I'm Susanna Burt, and I work with Weaver Human Services. I'm one of the assistant directors out there, and my focus is on prevention. I have a history of working in prevention for the last twenty-two years. One of the things, when we were here last, you asked about the data and kind of things that were going on here in Morgan. And we got permission, and we wanted to make sure we shared that. The data that I'm going to cite today is from the Student Health and Risk Prevention Survey that is currently being administered here in Morgan County every other year on the odd number of years. And it collects data from sixth, eighth, 10th, and 12th graders on substance use, it collects on local factors, and it also collects on mental health. And as I went back to look at Morgan data, so a lot of-
So this is the Sharp survey, right?
This is the Sharp survey, yes. I try not to use acronyms as much as possible because then I lose people. I'm training myself.
Me, usually.
One of the things that we've really, we've used it at not just the state level, but at the local level. And oftentimes with Weaver Human Services, it's used as a, the district, so the service level. So Weaver-Morgan counties are put together. When you can break them out, which is what we did, you start to see differences. I am sure it will come to nobody's surprise that Morgan, when compared to Weaver County, does much better. I hope that is not a surprise to you. The rates for consumption of substances are lower than Morgan County, or Weaver County. They're lower for a lot of the mental health things. But there were a few outliers that I thought were really interesting. Do you want me to go into that, or do you not want me to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
So some of the things that I found is that there were certain risk factors that you're actually, a risk factor is just something that increases the risk or the likelihood that a student or a youth may engage in unhealthy behaviors. That could be a variety of things. It is not just substance use or mental health. It may be dropout, it could be violence. But there's factors that are at play here in your community. And the ones that kind of stuck out is among your sixth graders, and your sixth grader population was the largest number of students that were surveyed. So that's the good news, is that the state is not like twenty seniors. This is like a hundred and eighty-five sixth graders. The sixth graders had a higher-than-state rate of poor family management. And that means that they felt that there was no one that monitored them, or that checked in on them, or they didn't really care what time they came home. That may be, and again, this is not, when you start looking at what it is in your community you want to address, you may decide that's not a big deal. But that's just one of the factors that Morgan had a forty-six point six rate, and the state rate is thirty-five point seven.
Can you just tell me how that question is asked?
I can. Give me two seconds, and I will read it exactly as you look.
And while you're looking that up, I do have a sixth grader.
I have a sixth grader, too.
Half of the responses I get are probably not correct. So I don't take it for what it's worth, but-
I will say this one is-
Hopefully they're pretty accurate in their discussions with you, but-
They are. So we've done, this is our twentieth year doing it. So it's been, we look at the trends. And that's like, I wouldn't just take one year as a standalone. I would actually look at it over the trend. And that's the other thing I'm going to bring up in a minute, is that while everything with a few of these outliers, with the exception of the outliers, is lower, your trends for substances and mental health are trending upward. So even though you're lower, you are seeing an unhealthy change. And we want to bring that back to where Morgan is way healthier. I mean, when you look at the Healthy Places Index, Morgan is at the top of the list, so-
Fifth in the nation.
In the fifth in the nation, see? But there are still concerns. So, okay, I'm looking at-
Maybe I'll talk about the validity of that, sure.
Yeah. We do have some things for, here's for family management. My parents ask if I've got my homework done. Would your parents know if you did not come home on time? The rules in my family are clear. When I am not at home, one of my parents knows where I am and who I am with. And if you drank some beer, wine, or liquor, for example, without your parents' permission, would you be caught by your parents? And there's three more. My family has clear rules about drugs and alcohol. This one I don't really, we don't really consider. But if you carried a handgun without your parents' permission, would you be caught by your parents? And if you skipped school, would you be caught by your parents? We don't usually worry so much about handgun, but when it says that without their permission, or that it's, there's concern, that's when we start looking at it. But those are all taken. Those, what was that, nine questions?
So you're asking a sixth grader about liquor?
Yes.
I don't think my sixth grader knows what liquor is. I'm being honest.
That's very fair.
Okay. I was just curious.
They do, again, I have to say, I've been working with the Student Health and Risk Prevention Survey, Sharp Survey, since 2001, at multiple levels. I actually was working at Weaver Human Services when we did the first survey in 2003 at a local level. So I, we've been doing this, we've made sure that it's validated, and that there are questions, we're sure that it is collecting the right data, if it's being honest. So we ask kids actually if they've ever used a certain made-up substance. And if they say yes to that, that whole survey is tossed. If they say at the end, they say, "Have you been honest?", and they say yes or no. If they say no, that whole survey is tossed. So they do have five different validity questions in there. Again, if they say that they're eighteen, and then they say they're in sixth grade, that survey is tossed. Like, there's a bunch of things that we make sure that it's honest and as valid as we can get. And as we, again, as we watch over the years, we have trends. And that's what we start watching. And if the trends are saying, "Hey, this is changing", so even if the kid doesn't understand what alcohol or what vaping is, which I am so hopeful that they don't, if we start seeing in that cohort, or that grade, that there is a change, then it's something that we want to address to stop it from changing to the negative.
So do they choose a grade every year, a different grade, or is it-
It's sixth, eighth, tenth, twelfth.
All the time, every year?
All the time, every, well, every other year. It's on odd number of years.
But you just took the sixth grade for an example here?
Yeah, that was just, that was the example, because that's, that's one where we're seeing an example where that, that particular factor in Morgan is higher than the state average, which was surprising to me.
Well, surprising to me.
Everything else is lower.
The reason that I asked the question was because it goes to the level of supervision that parents are providing a child at that age. And from my perspective, the level of supervision that I would pay to my, or give to my child here is different than when we lived in Las Vegas. The environment is different. And it's certainly different than the level of supervision my parents gave to me when I was in sixth grade. I mean, if you ask me the question, "When I'm not at home, would my parents know where I was?", yeah, generally, southern Nevada, you know?
Okay.
Because they, they sent me out on my motorcycle, and I rode to one friend's or another's, or I went out riding, and, you know, at dark, I came home because they fed me. And it's not that they didn't care, it's just that I was, it was a different time and place. And to a certain degree, I think there's a different time and place here, definitely different place. And so I'm, I, that's the reason, I was just wondering about the questions that give rise to that statistical deviation.
No, that's fine.
To your point, if I may, to your point, if a parent chooses not to talk to their child about something, and maybe because they are afraid they're going to do it to their child about it, when it's the data that's telling us that there is an unsupervised child that's starting to do these things, that means it's being discussed at school, and your children are learning about it, and the parents aren't giving a chance to address it, that's alarming. Because they're giving your education for a child that's experimenting.
Right, and probably misinformed themselves.
Yeah. So the other thing to note, I brought that up as an example. That is by no means what you have to focus on at all. I, all I wanted to show is that, while I considered that, and I looked at the data, that most of the time, ninety percent of the time, that's a made-up statistic, just to be clear, that's my estimation. The data is saying that Morgan is healthier than the state. It's Morgan, Morgan is healthier than the Weaver County or Weaver-Morgan combined. But those were ones that stood out to me, that I was surprised to see that those are significantly higher. And again, in a community where it's tight-knit, and you do have a lot more free area, what is it, like, open areas? Not free areas, but open areas. Like, yeah, you could probably ride your bike to your neighbor's that's in, I don't know those cities besides, like, I don't know how reasonable is to ride to Crowdon or whatever, but they're going to. I don't know.
Not very reasonable.
No. It's ten miles of freeway.
I've ridden around Morgan and Mountain Green. That's about all I've done.
But this neighborhood or another, I mean, you know, and I didn't, anyway.
But that's, that's what I'm saying.
I would just ask, that was, so that was one. What are the, I think you said there were a couple?
So the other ones were like, there's a parental attitudes are favorable towards antisocial behavior. So antisocial behavior, more isolating, again, not really checking in or setting good boundaries or engaging with them. There are, the perceived availability of guns, I didn't really look at, because that's another one that's higher. But I didn't think that was a big deal, because we also look at that in like Millard County.
Rural counties, you're going to see a higher percentage of access to them.
But one of the other ones that I wanted to bring to your attention was the trend. And mental health, while you're still significantly better than the state, and significantly better than Morgan, or Weaver County, we're seeing a trend from, I'll use sixth grade, in 2017, ten percent felt sad or hopeless for two weeks. And now it's at nineteen point two. Now, that's, again, you're still matching the trend, so it's a normal trend as far as compared to the state, so it's kind of matching that. But it's still concerning to me when twenty percent of the sixth graders feel sad or hopeless more than two weeks in a year. And that's something that I think is something to consider. Like, no one's saying, "Do this." The other one is, and I had to pull it up, I had to pull it up because it was too small for me to see. Prescription medications. This was also surprising. You do match the state rate for prescription misuse among sixth and eighth graders and 10th graders. And that's trended upward. Still a very small percentage of your population, but when you're matching the state number of one point eight and two point four, and then lifetime, five point four is matching the state rate for eighth graders who have misused prescription drugs in their lifetime. So that's, again, something that I'm like, that surprised me. You're still dealing with very small numbers, but it's something, as you go through looking at the data, you start planning and going, "Okay, this is what our data says. This is what the school says they need", which Kimmeli Crichton here has helped do a readiness assessment of what do they need? What do they feel is appropriate? All of that data comes together for us to say, this is why it's important for you guys to have a local staff here in Morgan County, that is someone who is from Morgan County, working towards advocating for the best practices or best prevention that this community needs. Which may say, "We're not going to even address parental attitudes. We're going to address something completely different." Or, "We're not going to address prescription medications. We're going to focus on vaping or alcohol." But that's not for me to decide. That's for a staff, and that's what, to go to the proposal. We'd love for you to spend your opioid dollars to put towards a staff that is here in Weaver, no, Weaver, Morgan County, focusing on prevention. And we've looked at what we could contribute to bring that to a twenty-seven-hour-a-week staff. Again, it would need to be someone not from Morgan, or not from Weaver County, but from Morgan, staying here, working here, and totally turned around from where the building is, but the building-
The city building.
The city building, where they have the lovely office, having them work there. That would be the ideal situation. So you don't have someone who is from North Ogden telling you what your data says. They would know that.
You'd also work with law.
Yeah, they would work with Mandy Webb, who is here.
Develop a community coalition of members that would volunteer and work on, and look at the data, and would work on a plan for Morgan.
Which, okay, can I keep moving forward?
So I've got a couple of questions before you go forward, that's okay. When I go to the state site and look at the results from the survey, it's lumping Weaver and Morgan together.
Yes.
Do you have the data separate?
Yes, we had to get permission from-
So what you're showing or talking about is the separate data?
The school districts will have the data.
You can, I can give this hard copy to you, but this had to, we had to get permission from the school district to share. Because that's, and I'm, I know this is a public meeting, but I'm not showing everything. But like, this is the school district data.
I was just curious if that-
Yeah.
So is the reason that it's lumped together on the state site more a privacy protection? Because we're a small-
No, so-
Sample size?
It's all things that way.
So they only put-
So is it by health district? Is that what it is?
Yes. So, do you want the politics?
Yeah.
No, I don't care about the politics. I don't think that's really, I just was curious as to why it was lumped here, but you did have it separate. So the data is available separately, which is, I think, a positive thing.
Yes, it is available separately. They actually could drill it down if they have enough sample size. I would not pull out the 12th graders as much, because it was, it was like a fifty seniors. And that's a really small sample, to make the assumption of all 12th graders, and I, and I really don't know the population of-
Actually, that's not low. That's a quarter of it.
Yeah, that's probably about a quarter.
That's a quarter of it, or maybe a little higher.
Do you only have one high school?
Yes.
Okay. Then, then you could do that. But you could drill it down to, do you have multiple junior highs, or just one junior high?
Two.
So you could actually look at the eighth grade numbers compared, if you wanted to. I don't have that data. I only have the aggregate county-level data.
And then the other question I have, well, I'll make a statement before I ask the question. And I'll be, maybe, maybe more blunt than I should in making this statement.
That's okay.
Government is not always the best tool to provide assistance in a lot of situations. And I've seen a lot of government entities, and I, this is not directed towards the Weaver-Morgan entities necessarily, that are well-meaning, but tend to cause more problems than they do good.
Okay.
How do we prevent that from becoming this? And because of that, I'm hesitant to say, "Well, let's add some more bureaucracy here" to take care of a problem that, truth be told, ought to be taken care of in the home and by families.
Right.
And maybe the reason we're in this situation, even having this conversation, is because it's not being taken care of in the home. And, and we are seeing a disintegration of families across the country. Our community's probably no different, and that's probably a part of it. But I just, I have this nagging thing, like, well, is government really the best entity to do this?
That's a great question.
And how do we, how do we deal with those problems? And how do we keep somebody who's maybe a well-meaning person from taking a detour and getting involved in places where maybe they hadn't ought to be?
So first of all, I totally agree with what you just said. And it isn't always the solution to go to government to solve everything. But that's why having someone that's here and bringing together what already exists. So someone that's talking to the health department, and the school department, the school district, and your police department, and the county commissioner, and having a nice group meeting so that we're seeing who's on the same page, and including parents, because you would never want to do this without parents or the youth. That's why it will help deter it from becoming only a government entity. It will not be a Weaver Human Services thing. It won't be a Weaver-Morgan Health Department thing. It's going to be something that belongs to the community of Morgan County. That's what we want. That's why it has to be driven by people that live here. It has to be driven by what resources exist here, rather than a saying, "You need this." Again, I can look at the data, if I were, you know, I was a Fed, I could look at it and be like, "Oh, this is what you need", and inflict that upon you. Or we can say, "Hey, have someone else look at the data and let them see", using a process that says, "Look at it, see what we need. If parents say, 'Hey, we don't want this', then you don't do that." An example, that's a great question, that'll lead into what I was, that's a great segue.
No, that's great.
So before now, we've had Kimmeli Crichton working from Weaver Human Services as a community, not, she doesn't live here, but she spends a lot of time here and has built a lot of relationships, including with Mandy Webb and Kylie Rock. Okay, learning names. And they came up with a plan. They came up with a plan, not me. And it was done with no funding. And I went through it today, and I went through what they actually accomplished since developing this plan, and when did you develop this? Like, last summer?
Well, we started, we started before we wrote it down.
Okay. Well, because they have done, because the school district requested some parenting classes, they reached out to Kimmeli, and Kimmeli coordinated with Sunny, Sunny what? Book holder, to have parenting classes here. They asked for it. We did not pitch, they asked. Then they worked together to do the River Walk. No, that's not River Walk. Is it River Walk, is it River Walk Parkway?
River Parkway.
River Parkway. See, this is why you need someone who lives here. I'd have them there. And then, because of things that they said they wanted, we went and found some additional funding to go towards things that the school district or the parents that were sitting on the safety committee said, "Hey, we'd really like to do this." So we wrote for stuff and said, "Now we have funding to give to you, to like, have at it." That's part of what we wanted to have guide for us, so that you get your resources that you need, we become the people that support you in whatever it is that you're going down, whatever the process. That's it. But I just wanted you to know that they have done a plan, and I was really impressed with all that they did.
You really skirted the coalition structure.
Oh.
And maybe you'd spent just a hairline of time on that. Because you spend more time on it.
Okay. So one of the things about having a coalition, and guess what, you already have some. That's why the Safety Council is kind of working us right now. You have people that are coming together to work towards a common goal. You have the school district, law enforcement, you have parents, you have PTA. You'll have city offices, all sitting together to see what's best for the community. That's what a coalition is. I know that it's been in the past, not every, like, there's an old song, "Coalition to End All Coalitions", I don't know if you even know that song? Okay, it's a very old song. But that's kind of what we want to make sure that we're not doing. We don't want to become bureaucracy. We don't want to become a hindrance to what the community needs. And having people from faith-based community organizations, so not government, but faith-based communities. You want to have parents, you want to have doctors or pharmacists that run their own clinics. You want to have maybe even firefighters or first responders. Anyone who wants to be a part, that wants to see a healthier community, or address a specific issue, they come together.
In Weaver County, a lot of the mayors and council members are also part of this.
And legislators, or like, state school board members could sit on, like, that's something we would invite, or we would encourage people to invite, to be a part of, to again, guide what is best for your community. So they would meet, they would make a plan, because I am, I will say, having a plan is always really good, because then you can show the outcomes. And I know that sounds very science-y and lovely, but being able to say why we're spending our time, whether it's volunteering or paying someone to be here, being able to show why you're doing something, and producing outcomes that isn't just, "Hey, we served four thousand people", but why are those four thousand people better?
Is that plan posted somewhere, or is that-
No, but this one, this is just what they've been working on with the, is it the Safety Council Committee? Because I called it the Safety Task Force from the community council. That's what they're using right now. But I, I would be glad to share that. Are you comfortable with me sharing that?
This is what Mammy and I have written, that would, we would like, we would like to see the funding go back to Morgan. And these would be the, what's that?
This is what you have, so this was a-
Yeah, so this was like our action plan of what we're accomplishing. But I sent it out to Gaylee Adams, just for her to review, and she just sent it out to me. But like, the Safety Council has not adopted it. It's just something that Mammy and I are working together with our entities to do with the resources and programs that we are able to-
Then I misspoke, I apologize.
Amanda Webb, right?
Mammy, yes.
Mandy.
You threw me off there for a second, I'm like, who's Amanda? Sorry. Yes, so-
So, getting back to your proposal, just to make sure I understand this. The proposal is the, Human Services has some funding available that would go towards an individual to be stationed here in Morgan to kind of coordinate all of what we're talking about.
Correct.
The request would be to bring some funds from the opioid settlement funding that would come to the county and place in there. Between those two funding sources, would that fund the entire thing? Or are you seeking funding from the school district or some other sources?
What funded position is that coordinated position, the rest of it? What funded position is that coordinated position? The rest of it is the community?
Volunteer.
Yeah.
In kind. Well, you know, in Weber County, certain jobs will say you can dedicate, the staff person can dedicate their time to be on that committee in that area and serve.
So, yes, but that's also something I know that, again, we as a resource can write for grants or we can write for specific things like the family dinner night. That is something that the school district requested, right? That they wanted, came up with like, this is what we wanted.
In terms of questions for the surveys, that's what you're talking about?
No. This is just for family dinner, just to have an event here in Morgan County.
This is an event they did, okay.
Right.
Is Amanda full-time?
No. No, right? She's not full-time.
And how is she funded?
Through the health department.
The health department.
So she's Weaver Morgan.
Weaver Morgan.
So what percentage of the opioid settlement would go towards this individual? Do you know?
Well, so we were looking at.
You're suggesting 100% of our.
Yes.
Oh, all of it.
Of our take.
And we would match that to.
Somewhere between 12 and 17,000 somewhere.
Yeah.
Per year.
And it's a 27-an-hour, 27-hours, not 27-an-hour, 27-hour week staff when we looked at how often it was open. So, which could grow, shrink, whatever.
So how many individuals in the same position do we have in Weber County?
I have, not I have, because they're not all my staff. We have.
Weber-Fremont, right?
Yeah. So we have four right now. We're looking for additional funding for a fifth, for Ben Loman High School. And then from there, we'll go towards also Ogden High.
So I'm just, I'm.
And Westfield.
I do math for my living, so I don't mean to.
That's fine.
Sound all mathy, but.
That's okay.
Population of Weber County is 21 times the size of ours. So I guess the thought would be getting a full-time person would be equivalent to having 21 full-time people down there versus the one up here.
Yeah. So most of the staff are not full-time. So Fremont is part-time and we don't have one for Ben Loman. I think we have a, we have a full-time for Weber. But yes, so like Weber's area that they serve is roughly 20,000 people.
So is the recommendation a full-time up here then? Without, with the others?
Twenty-seven hours.
Or 27 hours.
Twenty-seven hours. Yeah. So just shy of full-time. Because full-time's, I think, considered 30 hours now.
I guess that's a little bit of my concern is that even at 27 hours, if some of these other individuals, they average 27 hours for the other schools also in Weber, I don't know.
Fremont's doing 20 hours a week.
Okay. So, but regardless, I guess the concern is, I have two things. One is, is the concern is that are we putting much more focus in Morgan County? Will it be what, three times more focus in Morgan County than we are in Weber County? And the other concern is, not a concern, what are we spending these opioid monies on? And if there isn't anything available out there, well, we've got something presented to us that we can, is another thought. Those are my two thoughts.
Yeah. So, okay. Again, we made a proposal, but we are obviously not here. I'm not here. I'm going to speak for me. I'm not here. And if you see what could be done in a part-time or 15 hours a week, that's something that can be, a decision that could be made. I would take into the consideration that there's a lot of area that someone has to cover living in Morgan County. Because it wouldn't just be from Morgan City. It is to make sure you have people from Creighton.
Creighton.
And I don't know how far it goes. I'd have to look at a map. But like, things that are further out going towards Wyoming area, there might be, like, how do we make sure that we're reaching them? And that's something we've looked at in places like Millard County or in Sevier County, that when they have such a large area that's more rural, they still have the hours that they need because it includes the drive time and things like that.
So when you say reaching out, is it intended that this person would go out and visit people in their homes?
Oh, no. Okay. I mean, for like city council people to reach out to city's council people or like, there may be a need to rotate where you meet.
Well, we can, we can make that real simple.
Okay.
There's only one municipality in Morgan and they're located right next door to us.
Okay, great.
So that's not an issue in terms of going out.
Okay.
To other parts of the county. It's very centralized right here currently.
Okay. Again, I hope you acknowledge that, like, I know what my gap is. But that's why, again, I think that instead of, we're making a proposal because we want to keep it here with you. And we talk about the opioid dollars. These aren't necessarily tax dollars, but there are things that have gone in your community. You may have, and I don't have that data, that you may have grandparents or parents raising other people's children or other issues that they're experiencing because of the opioids. I don't know that data and that's something that you may have more knowledge being here. But those are the things that it would address, is supporting the people that live here, not the people that live in Weber County.
So basically, this is only to sustain a part-time person.
Correct.
And yet we use all of our funding for that.
Doesn't sound like we have much if that's all it's going to be.
Well, we've got $14,000 this year. And then the future years are 17,000. And then if you match it.
Yes.
It's quite a bit. In other words, that's more than a 30-hour a week.
You have to consider what else your planning is.
Yeah.
And we don't know yet.
Yeah.
We don't know yet. So this is a good discussion for me. That way we can at least then discuss it amongst ourselves at a future date and just determine what are our other needs to do with that opioid? Because we still haven't looked at that.
Oh.
Is it on a larger scale? Is there a hypothetical possibility the opiate-dependent person gets taken to the Weber County jail, starts on MAT, which is then paid for through our other system? We wouldn't take any of the dollars to here. It'd actually be Weber County dollars that would.
Actually, there are dollars too, remember?
Yes, sorry. This is what I'm trying to imply, what I'm trying to imply.
I get very upset at that. When you guys say it's your money, I'm sorry, we spend a heck of a lot down that direction. Don't get me upset on that one.
What I'm trying to imply is that Weber, Morgan County residents are also going to get some of those other benefits that $13,000 isn't going to help them at all with, because we've got programs set up in Weber County or Morgan County residents. That's what I'm trying to imply.
I'm going to do a real quick time check here. Commissioner Fackrell and Wilson, you have an item for our work session.
So I gave these guys. Thirty minutes.
And I apologize.
So we probably ought to wrap that up.
Can I leave this with one of you?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Please know that it is not to be posted on social media or anywhere else.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Yeah, you can.
And I appreciate you taking the time today. I know that it's, you've got a lot of people probably coming up over here. And I appreciate it. Thank you for.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fackrell and Wilson, clear.gov discussion.
Okay. We, there she is. Sarah. Anyway, she's here. And we had come up with, or I had listened to a webinar on, from ClearGov, which is a partner of UAC. And then I invited Matt to join me, Commissioner Wilson, to join me on another follow-up webinar to do with budgeting. Matt sent out, sorry if I keep calling you Matt, Matt, Commissioner Wilson then sent out a email with some five-minute shorts on different parts of this program. And I just wanted to bring it up to you guys so that that way, anyway, we can have maybe a little bit better budgeting process this next year. And to see whether or not it will help us in a little bit more of the financial accounting of the, not better, but to, so that we can see what's happening within our budgeting process. So that means if somebody is not being, or we decide that somebody needs to be paid five cents more an hour, we can put it into this program automatically. Once you put it in there, from what I understand, is once you put it in there, it is automatic, benefit increases, retirement benefits, everything is automatic instead of what we've been going through for the last six months.
Which is?
What's that?
Which is?
Lots of errors in the study.
A lot of errors where we have to go back through and it has to go back to Leslie and to Julie. They make a correction, then it goes through another process and then another process. And we're still waiting on some final numbers. So anyway, this is just something, if you haven't watched them, she's got about 10 minutes of presentation to show us. We only have 15 minutes. So Sarah, do you have anything more to say, Matt? So Sarah, go ahead and do a quick, quick overview of it. We're not making any decisions tonight. We just wanted you to see it and see whether or not we wanted to pursue anything further.
Yeah, let me see here. So, are you able to see my screen?
We are.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, perfect. And it says legacy budgeting cycles are inefficient?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much, Commissioner Fackrell. So I today just have a couple things that I want to walk through and a couple slides. And then you can dive into the tool just a little bit. I can show you an example of some of the work that we've done in Utah. And then hopefully leave some time here for some questions and conversation. But where I first want to start is with the current budget building process of Morgan County. So as I've spoken with Commissioner Fackrell and Wilson in counties across the country, at ClearGov, we've learned that there are some key components to the budget. So we have the operating budget, capital, personnel, which are built in spreadsheets, which is going to make this process super disjointed. It's going to be scattered. It's going to be tedious. And one of the big ones here is that that makes this process really error-prone. Over 88% of spreadsheets have errors, and even sometimes those budget spreadsheets. And errors in the budget can be costly to the county. The operation of many different individuals, that brings in a ton of variables that are out of your control. The errors in your budget may be costing you substantial dollars in the process, maybe taking 100 or more hours of your time, more than it needs to, to do things like model out potential budget changes, personnel or any part of the budget. And then at the end of the day, to build a budget presentation that's consumable with charts and graphs on top of that process would take double the time. So what we've heard from other counties in your situation is that while the process you have in place may work, the tools to get you there can be super cumbersome, time-consuming and tedious. Now, the issues that Morgan County has with the budget are the same ones felt by counties across the country, which is why Naco and UAC took an interest in ClearGov. So they vetted our process for counties and both of them actually partner exclusively with ClearGov. Because our tools save time and money for counties. They're really easy to use. They improve transparency. And the visual output of the budget document that they build is really best-in-class. So I just wanted to bring up here, up on your screen, you'll see a selection of our Utah clients. But we are working with around 1,000 organizations across the country. So today, I'm just going to cover a little background on how and why we do what we do. And then I'll dive into the software here. Okay. So this is our, our product wheel here. And up across the top, we've got the three pieces for building your budget. So today, everything is really scattered in different spreadsheets. But with the ClearGov model, the capital budgeting tool, when you make a change there, it's going to flow really nicely into the operating budget. When you make one little change on personnel, it's going to update all of those pieces that Commissioner Fackrell was talking about to give you the output of the total dollar amount. And then those numbers are going to flow into our operational budget. And all of these pieces are going to flow really nicely into the digital budget book and the transparency tools to give a really nice visual output of the story you want to tell with your budget. Now, ClearGov has also partnered with your accounting system, Casell's. So our tools work as a complement to that current accounting software. And we actually function on an import-export model. So if you were to work with ClearGov, there's no big implementation process. It's not going to be a huge time lift on anybody. There are not super high setup fees because we just function on this import-export model. So it's easy to get data in and easy to get data out. And our implementation time is typically 60 to 90 days. We actually won an award for our implementation process based on customer feedback because it really is super easy and our customer service is unparalleled. So I wanted to give you a little look at some of these tools. The first one that I want to talk about is the personnel. So this is one area where Commissioner Fackrell and Commissioner Wilson have expressed that there's a huge time suck. Because when you make a change to one employee's wages, then you have to update every additional pay and benefit associated with that wage. Through this tool, we allow you to build, to build scenarios. And I'll show you in here on the back end. So this is actually the back end of our software. And what you can do with this tool is basically you build out rules around your wages, additional pays and benefits, and import Excel spreadsheets containing the wage schedules, employee names, IDs and benefit selections. And then those rules that you've built out tell the system the calculation method and eligibility requirements. So these are going to guide a lot of automation that I can show you in here around our scenarios. Are you, you're seeing my screen with my personnel budgeting and scenarios, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So the way that this tool works is since we have those rules built out in here and we have all of your individuals built into the tool here, now I can make a change at an individual level and give that a date range for a permanent adjustment or a one-time adjustment down here below. And that will automatically update for you all of the additional pay and benefits for that individual. Or like, if you are building out, modeling out around colas or department adjustments, I can make a change at the unit level, up here at our department level. And that's going to flow down and make all of those changes at once. And then your additional pay and benefits, because of those rules that we've set up, this is just going to flow through automatically and update those things. So you can see really, really quickly in these commissioners' meetings, what's the outcome if we make these types of changes. So you're going to save a ton of time and you're going to save all that heavy lifting that goes into this personnel piece. And then when it's time to take a look at this at a high level with your stakeholders, we can pivot really quickly between our scenarios, our years. So this can be used for multi-year planning and get a really easy look at multiple different years of your personnel budget. We can also look at units and departments in here. So that's our dashboard, dashboarding tool. And then the other piece in here that I wanted to show you is the capital budgeting tool, which the name of the game here is really making it as easy as we can for department heads to submit their requests and for you all to review those. So when your departments come in, they'll save a ton of time by not having to, you know, collect documents on a desktop to share with you all separate from the numbers. They would just come in and say, what type of request are they going to make for the capital budget? And then when they select that form, they can actually enter all of their details in here. And they can upload images and supplemental attachments, as well as all of their costs across multiple years. And they can even draw a marker on the map of where that project's going to occur. And when they do this, it's going to create for us an interactive map of all the projects going on in the county that's resident-facing. So residents can then see what are the projects going on. And you can update the status of that project and how much it has been spent to date. And residents can even go in and subscribe for updates for those things. So that rather than coming down, calling into the county to ask about a project going on around them, they can go directly to that online, to that online resource. So now, when you're. So now, when you're reviewing these projects, you're actually going to be reviewing them as a whole over multiple years. So our tool will tally up all of the requested dollars across all of your funds, and then you would key in the available dollars here, and we can actually make live changes here down below to toggle on and off these requests and see how that impacts our dollar amounts up above. And you can also play around with, maybe you want to do one of these projects, but you know you can't make that happen in this fiscal year, so you could push half of these costs into next year, play around with the numbers in the worksheet, so that you can come up with a capital plan that really makes sense for a five-year look, or even a 10-year look if you wanted to. And just like in personnel, in the capital request, we've also got this really nice high-level overview, and I'll show you what one of these projects looks like here for us. So when the department heads enter in that information, then when you go to review these projects, instead of just looking at dollars and cents on a spreadsheet, you can actually review this really nice, clean sheet that ClearGov puts together for you, and this form for your capital request is actually what's going to flow directly into your digital budget book. So here, here's one over here. So this is the City of Moab's actual digital budget book. Are you able to see this annual budget for fiscal year 2022 through 2023?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So once you have entered in all of your requests for your capital budget, your personnel budget, your operational budget, ClearGov is going to automate for you the creation of this document. So I actually have a lot of clients who, when they start working with ClearGov, they can move from having discussions around spreadsheets to having discussions around the visuals, the charts and graphs around those numbers, and seeing all of the historical data, because we created these out of the box from, from the historical data and the current budget data for Moab right here. So this is all interactive. I can pivot between different chart types in here, if I'm a different kind of visual learner. I can slice and dice this data to get a closer look at some of these smaller pieces of the pie, and I can even pop out my spreadsheets and scroll on through. So we automate all of the functions, every page is in a hardbook, also a flip print to PDF, and create a really nice visual document for residents or for you all when you're reviewing the budgets, that has headers and footers, it has page numbers, it has a table of contents that's linked, so that you can click in onto those pages. And that way, instead of scrolling through, you know, 100 pages of spreadsheets, you can have a table of contents that follows you through here. And the last thing that I want to show you in here is those projects that I told you are going to interface with an interactive map. So this is our transparency site, and it's going to do a lot of things, it's going to allow your residents to understand how their cash dollars are contributing to your expenditures. And so this is where your expenditures to date will live, but it's also going to allow you to have this really nice interactive map, so that they can click in on those projects around them and see what is the status of each of these projects, they can subscribe to those updates, see expenditures, and see what phase and what the timeline is for these. So those are a few of the things that ClearGov is going to be able to help you to do. Is there anything else, commissioners, that you saw in our agenda that you want me to show today? I know we have limited time, so I wasn't sure if you wanted me to dive a little deeper into anything or open the floor for questions.
I kind of wanted you to explain to them how in the rules we set, there's different levels of access to the things, so that as a commissioner, as commissioners, we have access to one level versus department heads and things.
Yeah, definitely. So let me open up. So when you are inviting department heads in here to contribute, there are different levels of access in here. So I can have view-only access, I can have contributor access, where they can make edits, I can have sub-requesters as contributors, and each of those, when they're invited in here, or here, this one has request reviews already submitted in here. If I flip over into the repository, you may be able to reopen it. So for instance, in this situation, I added as a contributor the sheriff, and I was able to give that sheriff access specifically to the public's budget. So now when they come in here to get ready to make requests, the only things that they can see are their specific budget and make changes on their specific budget. Does that make sense?
Uh huh.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's going to set up a chain of command for you. So department heads can have sub-requesters who are in there, you can assign just specific pieces of the budget, as well as just specific pieces of the budget book for individuals to have access to.
Sarah, a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
You mentioned the integration with Casell. Is that in its import-export function, but in order to have expense data, I'm assuming that integration has to take place on a fairly consistent basis. How does that typically work? Is that like a daily thing or a weekly thing? How do you keep that updated?
Yeah, so most of our clients are on a monthly or a bi-weekly schedule for sending us their, and some of them are quarterly and some of them are annually. It really depends on how frequently you want that data updated, but for expenditures, they typically don't change enough that you would need that every day. I do have a couple of clients who do send us expenditures on a daily basis, but most of them don't. Because of the partnership though with Casell, it's, they have a button built in to allow you to export to ClearGov, and then you would just send us over the expenditures report that they pre-built that fits what we need in our system to upload.
Awesome. And then the other question I had is, in terms of building a budget, is ClearGov able to import like historical budgets, so we could look at, you know, maybe a five-year view and say, well, this is what our budget's been over the last several years compared to current?
Yes. Great question. So for this example, we've got 20 years of data. You can actually bring in as many years as you want to, and this visual right here, if I'm looking at any one individual piece of the budget, you'll notice that it's updating for us. So our clients have told us that this has saved them a ton of, a ton of money actually, because when department heads come in here, they can see where I've historically overbudgeted and then underspent, so that they can reallocate some of those costs, rather than having to ask for additional.
Awesome. I like that. We're running right up against our time. Any other questions before we? Sarah, we appreciate your time. Commissioners Wilson and Fackrell, do we have a proposal on cost for this?
We haven't got into too much detail, what it would be if we bought the whole package.
Okay.
But, you know, it all depends on what we want.
I'd love to see pricing.
So, yeah.
We will get with you, Sarah, and we'll get a proposal from you and share it with them.
Okay, sounds awesome.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for the time today. It was great to speak with everybody. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Also, our NACO rep, Kyle Klein, is happy to talk to anyone about that partnership, if anyone's interested in having a conversation with him about why they wanted to partner with us.
Perfect. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Talk soon.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody need a very quick break?
I do.
Okay.
We will start five minutes after that.
He's on one tonight.
Don't worry, I might be on one too.
He's just mad because you were bringing him any donuts. No. That's all right, I'm just making some info.
Mike, do you remember where we have the subscription for American lands, what account, what non-competitive? You know where I think we have to be taken from?
What's that?
From our PILT.
PILT?
PILT, yeah, PILT payment.
Well, the PILT just goes into the general fund, and that comes out of the general fund, so I guess we could say that's where it's coming from.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to start just a couple minutes late, but we'll get started here in just a moment, move through our agenda. For those members of the public who are joining us, there is a sign-in sheet back there, if you'd like your name listed as being an attendee in the meeting, feel free to put your name down there. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Morgan County Commission Meeting. Today is March 7th, 2023. We just completed a work session where we discussed a couple of items. We will move into our invocation or moment of reflection, and then the pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Commissioner McConnell to take it.
Father in heaven, we're grateful this time for the opportunity that we have to meet together as members of this community and as county commission. We're grateful for the blessings that we enjoy, for the rain and snowfall that we've received throughout the fall and winter season. We're grateful, Father, for the opportunity to discuss matters important to our community, and pray that as we do so, that we might enjoy a spirit of wisdom and cooperation and kindness towards others. We pray that Thou will continue to bless us, particularly as we enter into the spring season, that we'll be able to have a moderate spring, such that our snowfall will descend from the mountains in a controllable fashion. We're grateful again for all that we have, and pray thy blessings to be upon us this night, and do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner McConnell. We will move to our consent items. There's one item, which is the approval of the February 21st, 2023 meeting minutes. Are there any adjustments to the minutes that have not yet been provided to Julie?
So Mike Wasuata's last name is misspelled, and the others in attendance, I don't know.
Yeah, how do you spell that? Do you know for sure?
Yeah, it's W-A-S-U-I-T-A.
Yeah, I didn't know, I couldn't read his writing.
He's a doctor.
Did somebody provide you the information on?
The vote?
Yeah.
Jeremy just told me that he actually has a recording that he can give me, just not the video. So I just found it out a bit ago, so I will take a bit of that.
I'm pretty sure I made the motion. And I think it was seconded.
I have something you guys can do.
In item G1, you typically do the motion, and then the second, but in that one you've got the vote, and then the second, and then, did you see that? Mike Wasuata's name again is down in the public comments. In the commissioner comments, Commissioner Anderson, that counties at the end of the sentence and the second bullet point should be plural counties as opposed to possessive.
What was that again? Sorry.
It's in the commissioner comments, Commissioner Anderson, second bullet point.
Round counties.
Commissioner Newton's the second bullet point. I think Leslie suggested that we start having as opposed to have.
Okay.
And Commissioner Fackrell's first bullet point at the end, 5% has to go two trails.
And Commissioner Fackrell, was that the second one, was that a continuation of the first? Did they go together?
Trails what?
About the meeting that was coming up?
That was to, no, that was just an announcement saying we were going to have a trail meeting on the 27th, where we were going to discuss it.
But any, what is that committee that's meeting?
It was the ATAP, Active Transportation Advisory Board.
That's all I have.
I did receive Garrett's corrections.
Look for a motion on the consent item one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the county commission minutes for the February 21st, 2023 meeting.
Second?
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move to...
Second.
Yes, Commissioner Wilson's second. Okay, we'll move to item C, declarations of conflict of interest within the items on the agenda by the commissioners. Okay, seeing none, we will move to item D, which is a public comment period. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission. I will note that we do have a public hearing on the agenda, that's item G, the M&amp;D Nelson Rezone, so there will be opportunity to address the commission at that point, if you have comments specific to that. Otherwise, if you have comments specific to any other items on the agenda, or would like to address the commission now is your time, please limit your comments to three minutes, and please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Bill Coates, I'm here representing the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District. I wanted to give you a quick update on our funding situation for the plant expansion for the sewer. We've received a bid from COP Construction for $23 million, and we accepted that bid to do the expansion. That plus our other expenses to include pre-equipment buys takes us up to $28 million. Right now, we have funding at $26 million, so it looks like we're going to have to go out to a private loan for $2 million. I'm here asking that if you have any remaining ARPA funds, if we'd be considered for those, since the plant has basically doubled in cost. We certainly appreciate the $400,000 that you previously awarded to us, but like I said, it'd be very much appreciated if you could consider awarding us more of that ARPA money. Are there any questions on the sewer and the sewer expansion, if anyone may have?
When do you anticipate starting construction?
So it looks like we're going to start probably mid-April with the first bit of dirt being turned, and it's a 730-day project.
Two years.
Yeah, two years.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm going to apologize in advance, you guys normally don't hear from me, but this night you will. I may want to talk about the SHARP survey right now, probably one of only or very few that actually have...
Lilia, will you just state your name for the record?
Lilia Mountain Green.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You're good.
Lilia Allen. But has read the... But has read over the questions and they're pretty heavy and on the, very negative for me as a parent. So I do opt my child out and I think we've got the concern that most kids probably don't even read the questions, they just run through them and/or don't understand the real issues. So it's a lot of the social issues at hand and like I said, it's heavy. So I also understand that most surveys, and I believe it's the same with the SHARP, that our schools are paid per pupil and I don't agree with that either. So.
Okay. Seeing no additional public comment, we appreciate you sharing with us. We do not have any presentations this evening. We will move to item F, which is our action items and we'll start with Nicole Reed. This is a discussion decision on the USU Morgan County Extension 2023 Cooperative Agreement with Utah State and Morgan County. Hi, Nicole.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. My name's Nicole Reed and I'm with USU Extension Office and I'm just here to go over the county cooperative agreement and see if there's any questions that the commission has for it.
I didn't see any major changes from previous agreements. Would you agree with that?
Agree.
It is pretty similar and I did reach out today for some clarification on page two, paragraph four, where it says by April 1st, 2023, each of USU and county agree to provide the other party with the current inventory of its property used in conjunction with extension services in the county. And that's just based upon, I believe earlier in that paragraph, it talks about that items purchased by the county will remain the county, those purchased by USU will remain USU. So I reached out to Amanda as well, just to clarify that and ask who provides the inventory for the county. And she said, great question. In the 12 years of signing this document, I've never done this. And so I think it's kind of just a question that we're supposed to do it, maybe we haven't done it. And so she said, the university never asked to see a list from the county, but they do ask for us to keep an inventory of things purchased with USU money. We keep that on hand and update it as needed. If USU asks for a list of items purchased with county monies, I'd have our staff assistant put it together, no problem. And so I don't know if, just to comply with the agreement, if you'd like to direct, you know, Amanda and Nicole to maybe just do that so we have that list and we can update it if there are things that the county purchases.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
I think it is too.
All right, that was the only clarification I had and I think.
Is operating budget amount consistent with what we in fact budgeted for this item?
I was gonna ask that same question.
After the adjustment.
Do you have?
I don't have the update, no. That's part of our problem.
We'll probably pull that up and make sure.
Do you know, Nicole, if that budget amount matches our current budgeted amount?
It lost my knowledge, yes it did.
I would assume that's the case. I just think about it there if I, looks like it's got the specific line items.
It does.
I would guess it does match. It always has in the past, but we could certainly make that a condition of our signing of the agreement.
Just to provide a list of?
Just to make sure that our budget matches what they have in the agreement.
Okay.
Which we can do very quickly. That shouldn't be an issue. I would guess that this came directly from our budget. Okay, any other questions regarding this item? We'll look for a motion on item number one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2023 USU Morgan County Extension Cooperative Agreement with the stipulation that it matches our current budget amount and that we keep a list of those things that we purchase as Morgan County.
I'll second.
Motion is second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Turner. Emergency manager.
I don't know if you thought this would be an easy gig when you took it just before COVID, but we've had more emergencies than we thought we would have. Do we have a microphone over there by the?
The computer?
Just this one here? Can I pick it over there at some point? Okay, perfect. Let's start here. Yeah, when I originally took this job, this is what I figured would be the entirety of emergency management for Morgan County. Things have changed, but yes, we are here. I'm trying to think of how to do this. I've been keeping an eye on the snowpack and everything for quite a while. I don't want to have happen with the news media today talking about the snowpack and it's gonna flood and there's been a significant increase in phone calls today for both myself and Brett. And so there's a lot of people out there concerned and they're probably rightfully concerned. I came here today so that we could have a discussion on how we wanna respond and how we wanna handle the potential for flooding in Morgan County. I brought my computer with me and I'll show you some of the things that I look at, but we also need to have a discussion because rumor has it that the news media said, just go to your local public works and free sandbags. Feel free, go and pick them up. One of the issues with doing something like that is a neighboring county had that policy and there was people descend on it and they picked up all the sandbags. Then when it came time for flooding, they had no sandbags. And so I've been discussing with Weaver County and also Box Elder County as well. And their policy is, I shared a draft policy for Morgan County in my proposal and this is patterned after the draft policy from Box Elder County. They're not handing out free sandbags in Box Elder as well because back in 2017, they had a significant flooding issue and they realized that we need to be careful and judicious on how we handle sandbags. Because if we hand out 10, 15 sandbags to everybody and Jared Anderson doesn't need the sandbags, but he keeps them and Matt Wilson needs 30 sandbags and we don't have the required amount to help him out, then we've kinda got an issue.
20 bucks a bag.
And the other problem is, is then the guy that has them and don't need them, he'll turn around and sell them for a significant uptick. And so as Brett and I have been, Brett Heiner and I have been working on this for months now, we've come up with a proposal that we wanna do for Morgan County and we're moving forward in the preparation on that. We've cleared a place off at the Morgan County Fairgrounds where we proposed that we're gonna bring in four dump truckloads of sand. Also down at the Kent Smith Park, we're gonna bring in initially two dump truckloads of sand down at the Kent Smith Park and potentially another site down in the Mountain Green area. And what we are proposing is, is that the community, if you feel concerned and you wanna get sandbags, feel free to go purchase them at any hardware store and you can come to either the Kent Smith Park or the fairgrounds and fill your sandbags with that sand. If it comes to the point where you've prepared and it looks like the floodwaters are gonna top your sandbags, the county will step in at that point and provide sandbags and sand. But in the initial phases, as we're waiting for that potential to happen, we don't wanna hand out a bunch of sandbags until there's active flooding or within a couple of days of active flooding. Last Thursday, I met with Kevin, I can't say his last name, but he's with the National Weather Service in Salt Lake. He came up Thursday and we had a meeting about being aware of the weather and potentials. And he said that the hydrologist will contact me and give us about a three-day warning of when they think the potential of flooding will happen. He said, right now, it's more of a wait and see. And so let me go over and hook up to my computer and I'll show you some of the things that I've been looking at. I don't know if it'll help, I don't know if it'll make, but let's try it.
Austin, while you're doing that, I think it's important that the public understand that the chances of flooding really depend on how quick things warm up, not necessarily that there's a lot more water in the mountains than there has been in the past.
That's right where we're headed. That's the conversation I wanna have right now.
We have all the control in the world over that.
Who has the control there? Does someone have control over the thermostat? Okay. Let me back up just a little bit. Hopefully this works good. This is part of the United States Bureau of Reclamation and I sent the link to the commissioners. When I pull up this website. Let me do it one more time to show you how it looks. When you pull up the website, it'll pull up like this and every one of those is a drainage and a system. And so you can zoom in, the other direction zooming, and you can pick a different system, Pine View, East Canyon. So I went in and picked East Canyon. This is East Canyon Reservoir here and you go through the snow tell sites and this will give you the water equivalent right now. So one of the ones I look at is Harts Gravel, okay? In Harts Gravel, this black line right here is this year and we've been bumping along the maximum amount of snowpack all the way up. So we are truly gaining a pretty significant snowpack. And so does this guarantee that we're gonna flood this year? Not yet. Okay? According to Kevin Bruchbach, he's, I hope he's not upset that my slaughter is.
You mean, it's not Kevin you being?
No, it's not. According to Kevin, we are not at a point where we have to panic quite yet. Are we concerned? Are we paying attention? Absolutely. And so some of the other dates I look at are times that we've had other significant flooding in the county. One of the last ones that we had was in 2011. Can you guys see that? You can hardly see it, but there's a light green. This is us right now on March 4th. We got 26.4 inches of water equivalent in the snowpack. About March 4th in 2011, when we had significant flooding, we had 21.5. So yes, we're above 2011, the last time that we had significant flooding. If you go down here, unfortunately, it doesn't go back to 83, 84. But there's another year that we had a significant snowpack.
Does it show them ground saturation?
It does not. So this is just the water equivalent snowpack. In 2019, we actually had a very similar snowpack.
Cause in 2011, we had, it was ground saturation.
It was ground saturation. You're right. But here's the other thing, in 2019, we actually ended up having a bigger snowpack cause it continued to add, but like Commissioner Newton said, it's all on how it melts out. It came out slowly and mellow in 2019 and we didn't have the huge amounts of flooding.
I think mellow is a word here.
It is today. It is today, Commissioner. But in 2011, not only was it the saturation, the other issue was, is it came out late. It came out late and it warmed up really fast and it all came out at the same time. So that was an issue of 2011. So, but since this doesn't go back far enough, I picked another place, Smith Morehouse, okay? It's not in our county, I understand that, but that's where our water comes from. And this is, if any of you guys have been up Weaver Canyon above Oakley, this snow tell site's about where Thousand Peaks Ranch is, where you go up towards the Smith Morehouse Reservoir, it's right in that general area. Okay? Right now, today, we're at 17.3 inches of water equivalent in the snowpack there. If we go over to 1983, we're way above. But if you look at 1983, the snowpack stayed and stayed and stayed and then it melted out when it got hot. 2019, another big snow year, actually had more snow than in 83, but if you look, it melted out almost a month earlier and it came out slower and more casual. So I guess what I'm getting at is yes, we are prepared. It all depends on how everything melts out at this point. Have we had bigger snowpacks? Absolutely. And a lot of these, if you look, right here is a little X. Up at Smith Morehouse, it generally peaks on the 3rd of April and it generally has 14.1 inches. I'm gonna go back to Harts Gravel and if you look right here, the end of January, it was 20.8 and we had a couple really good, the start of February was awesome because we just kinda hung tight there, cleared till the 21st. So we had a couple, over two good weeks of just, life was good, the snowpack didn't increase, there was little storms come in, but it didn't really add a lot. And so we are prepared and we're continuing to move forward and getting prepared. Having said that, we still probably have about, I'm not gonna ever win the lottery, so don't take this to the bank, but we'll have to wait and see how the next month, month and a half comes out. The first thing we're gonna end up dealing with is, it's called sheet flooding. That's where the low-level foothills and stuff, it'll all melt out and potentially come down. But one thing I realized this afternoon, as I was talking to an older emergency manager that served Morgan for many years, he went and helped his friend with a tractor and he was moving the snow and he found out that the ground was not frozen underneath the snow. So that is a very positive thing for us. The ground does have a lot of water in it, but it isn't frozen solid. And so some of this water, as we melt it out, if we can bring it out casually and slowly, it might just go in the ground and we might be just fine.
Yeah, so if one of the things happen that is happening currently, you're right, the ground is not frozen, cause I've dug holes without trying and what I've been trying to take off the snow. We're eating freezing temperatures at night, which slow the flow right now. Then during the daytime or early morning, it's still frozen and then it starts to melt and we're only having a short amount of times of melting.
Correct.
But those times, if we can hopefully, everybody make a good prayer, have a good day of prayer and let's hope that this season goes with that slowed response, freezing at night, warming during the day, freezing at night, warming during the day, we might have a great year. But I don't have enough power in me to go and ask for the county to be preserved. So everybody else, maybe with all the prayers, maybe we'll get somebody to help, divine presence.
And so absolutely, I'll take luck every day, I'll take prayers every day and we're I'll take luck every day, I'll take prayers every day, and we're still in the process of preparing. And that's what I want people to know, is we're well aware. We get...I get daily emails from the National Weather Service, and I've signed up, they're going to give me warnings. Anytime there's any kind of a stream flow warning, any kind of an anything, I will be notified immediately, and from there, we will be prepared. I've been talking to members of the community, been blowing up my phone, not quite as much as you guys get, but a little bit less. And we're getting prepared, so when that time comes, we will have a response for whatever happens. I'm in contact with Weaver Basin at least weekly on their flows out of the reservoirs and the things they're preparing to do. So, I know the first part of April, they were going to do a big flow at the first part of May, or March, but they've pushed that back to April.
Question for you.
Yes.
How are we going to let the people know?
As I was sitting in the back, my wife was talking to me about that. I'm trying to get a social media page going for Morgan County Emergency Management. If I had a little bit more time in the day...
What I would suggest is you let Jeremy know...
Yes.
Immediately, and then people, if there's a problem or whatever, and they hear about it from Morgan Moms or wherever, they can go to the website and get the official word from you.
The other issue is, is on Morgan Moms, not to...there was a flooding issue that came in about January, and by the time we tracked down where the issue was, it ended up being in Colville. So, sometimes when somebody's got a flooding issue and they put it on Morgan Moms, it doesn't end up actually being inside the county.
That's why it would be good to have it on our website.
Yeah.
Okay? Just a link. So, Jeremy, if you can make sure and put that in there.
Yep.
I figured he would.
By the end of the week, we'll have them up and running.
Also, from one of the former commissioners that was here during the 1983 flooding time, he says, "Be prepared with big equipment..."
Yes, sir.
"...in, you know, private people, whatever you got to do. Be prepared with some equipment to be able to handle the bridges and any potential whatever might happen, because it can happen."
Yeah, and it will. And we've already been in contact with...the equipment we have nowadays is significantly bigger than they had back in 1983.
Right.
And we've been in contact with those guys already. So, when it comes to that point, we have that already lined up.
Austin, have we been able to do the best we can to evaluate the river to see, look for any down trees? I know that's been an issue during flooding times.
We've tried to keep on that so that we don't have to, we don't get caught by any surprises. The issue is, is the last time we had any real flow in the river was in 2017 that we had any significant flow. And so, there is garbage and debris in the river. I know during the high-wind event in 2020, we went in and pulled a bunch of trees and stuff out of the river. I know I've been working with some of the farmers and that. If they have a beaver dam or other trees that go in East Canyon Creek or that, then we've went in and dealt with it as they came up. So, we're always working on that.
So, I don't have any objection to the policy that you've presented?
Okay.
Are there any...are we trying to coordinate any volunteer efforts to fill the sandbags with the sand that's dumped at the location, or will we wait until we're the three days out?
Right now, at this point, it's going to be as you want, as you need. If someone goes out and buys sandbags and they want to fill them up, then they can feel free to go and use that, and we'll keep an eye on it.
But what about, what about sandbags required for the flooding? You indicate the county is going to try to do.
Yes. That I've, as these people have called and talked to me, my advice is, if you're going to go out and buy sandbags, do not fill them at this point. If you want to, I'm not going to stop you. The issue with sandbags is they will start to degrade. And so, if you go get a bunch of sandbags and you put a bunch of wet sand in them, and you put them outside, by the time you go to use them, you grab onto that, it'll probably rip. And so, that's why, as I talk to these people and say, "We're going to put..." These group leaders, ward members, as I'm talking to them, I'm telling them, "We'll put some sand out. If you want to preemptively fill some sandbags, that's fine. When it comes time and we know that the flooding is near, we will come in. If you guys will provide the manpower, we're going to come in with more sandbags and more sand as needed. If we need to, we'll bring in semi-truck loads of sand."
Okay. We need to get the snow out of the way for the sand.
That's exactly what we've been doing with the county loader. We've spent a portion of the day over at the fairgrounds and also down at the Kent Smith
Okay. In terms of an action item here, I think we just need to give our thumbs up on the document that you put together in terms of our policy for how we're going to handle sandbags and such. What are we calling this policy? Deployment and Distribution of Sandbags Policy?
Sure. Maybe one more thing to think about. As far as acquiring the sand and that, do we want to just do a budget adjustment at the end when we see where we're at?
My recommendation would be that we take it from the emergency management budget now.
Correct.
Granted, there's probably not funds in there right now, but we can make a budget adjustment to pull funds from the flood fund and...
The flood mitigation fund would be exactly...
To reimburse that account.
And we'll do that. If it comes to the point where we need to lease heavy equipment or anything, then we'll... Do you want me to continue to work with Matt if we end up leasing heavy equipment or that, or?
Because of this policy, you're going to have somebody out there with sandbags that are going to be gouged in the public.
We're not.
No, we're not. But those individuals within the county or throughout the state, if you start trying to find them, right now, there's starting to be a shortage in them. So, now, what are we going to do?
When it comes time for flooding, we're going to deliver the sandbags to mitigate the risk. But not at this point.
I think the hope is that those who feel like they are in danger will take some preemptive measures to protect their own property and realize that the cost to protect your own property does fall on you as the property owner. The county doesn't go out and try to protect property when there's a wind event. We will help clean up when we can.
Correct.
And the same goes for flooding. We don't want to, we want to make sure that we're managing our resources in the best way possible. If everybody comes and takes 10 sandbags and doesn't need them, and then we need 100 at somebody's house, we're in trouble. And so, the idea is, protect your property now if you need to and you feel like you need to. And otherwise, the county does have your back, and we'll do our best to make sure that you're taken care of when there is need.
Correct. One final public service announcement. This is something that, in the communications with Weaver County, what they're pushing for the upper valley is if you have snow up against your house, try to get that snow back three to five feet. Try to get the snow that's up, right up against your house, get that back away. In the fire, in wildland fire, they call that a defensible space. And so, also with us, we'd like, if you have, try to get the ice dams off your roof. If you have a huge volume of snow on your roof, try to get that mitigated as much as possible, but also try to move that. And I know I'm asking a lot from some people because I know there's places in the county that, to ask that, you're asking them to shovel four or five feet potentially away from their home, deep, not wide, deep. There's a significant amount of snow. I do understand that. But if we can start to try and get prepared, I'd rather be prepared and not need it than need it and not have it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Austin before we look for a motion on the draft policy for deployment and distribution of sandbags? Okay. That work for a motion then?
I'll move that we approve the plan for the deployment and distribution of sandbags that was presented by Austin.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner, we appreciate your work. Okay. Mr. Archibald.
Good evening.
Discussion decision, ratification of the agreement for the audiovisual retrofit of this commission.
Anybody have any questions? Garrett and me went through the contract very, very hardly. Mike's already signed the contract. I did send, excuse me, in the packet, I did put some of the brochures for the equipment. But do you have any other questions or?
Yeah, I do. There was a point in the contract, and I don't have the exact page at this moment, but it said that dollar amount was going to be, it was up through February 23rd. Did we get it completed by that date?
Yes, the contract is signed.
Yeah, we signed it in early February, partly because of that, so we're ratifying the signature of that agreement.
The only reason it wasn't in on the last meeting is we didn't have a signature from the owner of the company because he was out sick, so.
So, when's it going to begin?
They've already started ordering stuff. He said two months from, so I would guess mid-April.
And at that point, what are we going to do? I mean, they're going to be in here, and I hear it's going to take...
He said it's going to take them one day.
Oh, one day? Wow. Okay, sounds good to me.
So, the funds will come from federal COVID relief funds, federal dollars, but this should make access to these public meetings much better for the public, hopefully better audio and visual.
And you'll be able to see it on the big TVs here in here instead of trying to...
Look at the screen. This is great. We're excited about that. Okay, any other questions for Jeremy? If not, we'll look for a motion on item number three.
I move to accept or to ratify the signed AV retrofit for the county.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Item number four. Attorney Smith, this is discussion decision approval of the State of Utah Administrative Office of the Court's Contract Amendment Number Two.
All right, so this is something that was sent into Leslie, and I've reviewed it, and I've also talked to our treasurer and confirmed that the rent and telephone charges have been the same since 2013, when the contract was first implemented. And so, I guess the question is, do we keep it the status quo, or would you like to have some negotiation to see if the price should be changed? But that would be my only comment. As far as the telephone and the rent, those match the monthly lease and phone charge that they've had since the contract was first implemented.
That's a great question.
And I did not reach out. I should have reached out. I saw that there was the phone number in the packet, but I didn't have time to call them prior to the meeting.
So, this is the district court leasing space from the county for court-related activities.
Correct.
For cases all that rise within the jurisdiction of this court. So, to me, we could certainly increase rent potentially with them, but this is a service provided to the community at large, so I'm not particularly...
I've said it before, but I'm not a huge fan of government entities charging each other, simply because in the end, all the money's coming from those people that are sitting out there, and even us sitting up here, right? It's coming from the public. So, I don't particularly think it's necessary to make an adjustment to it, but if anybody feels strongly...
Is the cost of the telephone anymore?
That's probably a question for Jeremy.
Jeremy, where'd it go?
It may be less at this point, frankly, because we changed the system.
Yeah, because we changed the system, so I'm just wondering and making sure whether or not it is or isn't. So, Jeremy, come on in here again. Oh, he's watching.
I'm not sure why they have that emergency, because the courts don't use their phones. They have their own phones as well for the safety. It's getting margin. No idea what that is.
They might want an adjustment.
Yeah, they may want an adjustment.
If that's the case, I move to amend amendment.
Yeah, hurry and approve it.
Would you like me to? I mean, I think we can approve it, but that I can get further clarification for the next time, or?
They sent this over.
They sent it over, and they've already signed it.
And the overall compensation is not unreasonable, so I think it's fine. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the State of Utah Administrative Office of the Court's Contract Number 14-1996, Amendment Number Two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Well, we had two.
Wilson was just a little bit quicker.
Let's go with Wilson. That's what I wrote down as well. Okay, we are now to item number five. Mr. Cook? All right.
This is request approval for Cottonwood Subdivision Phase Seven Plaid Amendment to divide Lot 728 in half and combine each half into Lot 729A and 756A.
Jeremy Lance, Planning and Development Services at Morgan County. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the County Commission. Yeah, item number five on tonight's agenda is for Application 2, 3.002. As you said, the lots in question are all located on South Shoreline Drive and identified by the parcel and serial numbers located in the staff report. Jeremiah Cunningham, the county surveyor, posted comments for this item, but those comments can be reviewed and changes made before the plat is recorded, not necessarily at this time before this commission. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all minimum code requirements. There are no fire or engineer comments. There is a recommendation of approval from the planning commission that, no, it didn't quite make it into your staff report, but both stipulations from that meeting have been met, one of them being to add a A, as in dash A to 756, Lot 756. The other was to get an agent affidavit, I believe. Let's just put it at the correct, complete affidavit. We've gotten that, and that's included in your staff report tonight. Staff is recommending approval for this project. I, along with Josh Cook, can answer any questions that you have. And is the applicant in the audience tonight? Maybe not tonight, though.
So, this is taking three lots and making two?
One lot is disappearing entirely and being dissolved into the two lots in question.
Yeah, three to two.
So, you're not taking Lot 728 and cutting it in half? Because that's what it says in here.
Well, it's being divided in half, and half is going in, is being added to neighboring lot.
Okay. I just want you say you're taking away from, you're just making two new ones from that one lot.
You're taking three existing lots and taking the center one and putting half in the one on the left and half in the one on the right.
Making two lots bigger.
How's that for direction?
That's fine.
We're reducing density.
That's right, and that's okay. I'm fine with that. I used to, wasn't sure how.
Any questions for Mr. Lance? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Lance.
That, we'll look for a motion on item number five.
I'll make a motion to approve Cottonwood Spring View Platte Amendment, application 23.002, located generally at 6377 South Shoreline Drive, based on the findings and with conditions listed in the staff report dated March 7th, 2023.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, we will move to item number six. Mr. Cook, this is discussion decision. CW Land requests approval for a subdivision concept plan for the Rome man caves, which would create 14 commercial flex space condominiums.
Thank you. This is for application number 22.038, Rome man cave subdivision concept plan. The applicant is CW Land Company, and they are in the audience tonight. The property in question is located at the northeast corner of Old Highway Road in what will be Queens Garden Road. They are proposing 14 commercial flex space condominiums, and the project will be accessed off of Queens Garden Road. We have reviewed this application. Staff has found that they meet all minimum requirements for a concept plan. The Planning Commission recommended approval, five to zero, unanimous vote that night, and staff is recommending approval.
So I'm assuming, being that this is commercial, this is part of their 30% required commercial for their, well, our zoning and their?
Their development agreement.
Development agreement.
And it's 35% minimum?
Thirty-five.
And you're saying it's on the northeast area? Okay, so when they're putting that in, in the other map that has a drawing?
Yeah, the other map that was included, that is an old concept plan, and I'm not sure how it ended up in the packet, to be perfectly honest. This was the image that was supposed to be in there.
It's just a, it's just a straight, straight thing off of the, whatever that road is.
Yeah, the units themselves will access a driveway, so they're not, they're not backing out or driving into each unit from, and that was part of the redesign. You'll notice this application number is 22.038, so it occurred quite a while ago. It needed some major redesigning. Originally, they wanted all 14 to back out onto Queens Garden, and we asked them to redesign it.
So it's one right next to the Warner subdivision?
No, it's right next to the Rome commercial subdivision that was approved a couple months ago, the five lot subdivision. There's gonna be a bank there, some retail, some office space.
I think you're right, though, it's the Paul Warner subdivision that's down against Old Highway.
That's the line I'm looking at here. Is it this one right here, or is it clear over, over here?
It's on the right.
It's this one here?
Yep, right there.
Okay, so it's right next to the Paul Warner, so whatever it is, subdivision there. Okay.
Do you have any? I know where this is. What I'm not, and particularly since you indicated the concept plan in there is outdated, I guess I'm just not sure I fully understand the road plan within the Rome subdivision at this point.
Yeah, that's.
Do you have an updated depiction of that, or the plan?
I can find one to show you.
Okay.
It's still some, it's right here.
Yes, this road, so this is the road that's in right here.
This, the road that goes up to the school.
That's in.
Yep.
Correct. And it's just that length right there?
And it's this, this length right here. Below the residential.
This is an image of the old concept plan?
Yes.
But it maintains the street layout, so I'll highlight it over here. 5,000 West comes through here to the, to the west of the Queens Garden Road. Queens Garden Road is over here.
Okay.
5,000 West is over here. Further down here is Trapper's Loop.
Okay.
5,000 West is what divides the townhomes from the single-family residential section.
And the business?
Some of the business, yes.
So basically, this, this is just the property that is east of the other commercial area that they had planned?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. And what was the reason for man cave?
I didn't name it.
I'm just curious, is it supposed to be mechanic shops, or what, what's the idea of it?
Probably office space where you can also store or park your toys, or have a workshop. It's not gonna be mechanical. There's a list of uses. Any use that is proposed to go in there will have to fit into the list of uses in our zoning ordinance. Otherwise, they won't get a business license.
Okay, 'cause I'm just worried about whether or not it's gonna be mechanics that are doing their work at night, and it's gonna cause the neighbors right next door a problem with noise.
Yeah, when they come in to get their business license or, or find out if they can use it or not, hopefully they do their due diligence before they purchase it, but there is a list of uses in our code that they'll be required to abide by.
Okay.
So on, do you wanna go back to the, the one we're supposed to be looking at? Sorry, Josh. Thank you. I guess the one just thought I have, and I know this is concept level, but typically your approach is a lineup across from existing roadways, and it kinda looks like we've, for some reason, have decided not to do that, so.
That's something we can address during preliminary plat, site plan approval.
Perfect, perfect. I just wanted to note that.
Thank you.
And who's gonna be required to put up a fence if they are going to at that point? I mean, you've got the businesses, and you've got a fence between that and the Warner. Sure is it gonna be open space?
There's no requirement for people to fence their properties. So if somebody wants to fence their property, they can fence their property according to the restrictions in eight dash six of our code.
Josh, just for the benefit of the public, will you just very briefly explain where we're at in the process, the subdivision process in terms of this? So we're at the concept phase, which is the first of three phases. Can you maybe talk to that just?
It's technically the first of four in this case?
Sorry, four.
So they've already gone through and got their entitlements through the development agreement. This process is a concept plan for a subdivision. It's administrative, so as long as they check all the boxes, it cannot be denied legally. And as it's administrative, after the concept plan, then they would proceed with their preliminary plat and their site plan approval. Preliminary plat, in this case, will go through both Planning Commission and County Commission, same with their site plan. They can do it concurrently, they can do it separately, that's up to them. And then after they get preliminary plat approval, then they can move forward with their final plat, which we'll come directly back to you.
Thank you. Okay, any, any other questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant? Okay, would the applicant like to speak?
He says no.
Okay. Just looking around, trying to see. All right. Okay. With that, we'll look for a motion on item number six. Concept plan for the Rome man caves subdivision.
I'll move to approve the Rome man cave subdivision concept plan, application number 22.038, for 14 commercial flex space condominiums located at the northeast corner of Old Highway Road and Queens Garden Road in Incorporated Morgan County, based on the findings and within the conditions listed in the staff report dated March 7th, 2023.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, item number seven is an item that I placed on the agenda. I've spoken with most of you, I don't think I spoke with you, Commissioner Anderson, specifically regarding this. In 2018, there was a landowner who came to the county with a concern that part of their property that they had purchased may actually belong to the county. The county paid for a survey at that time, and it was determined that that portion of property did in fact belong, or should belong to the county. It was part of a public right-of-way. The landowner prepared the documents to be recorded, brought it into the county, but at the time, the county council never reviewed and officially accepted that property, which is required. So it's kinda sat in limbo all that time. So this is an effort to clean that up. This is a acceptance of a quick claim deed, deeding property along a road right-of-way along Richfield Lane to the county from a private landowner. And it's, I think, like two tenths of an acre approximately.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the quick claim deed, dated July 9th, 2018, and recorded as entry number 145261 in book 344, page 1757 of the Morgan County Recorder.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to accept. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. All right, that concludes our action items. We will now move to item G, which is a public hearing item. This item, we will have an opportunity for the public to address the commission. We'll do similar to what we typically do for our regular public comment period, and that is that we'll limit comments to three minutes. We'll ask you to please state your name for the record if you would like to address the commission. I will remind you that public comment is typically not a, a back-and-forth conversation, so the commission will listen. We don't typically answer questions. It's really not an appropriate point for you to ask questions, but it is an appropriate point for you to, to make comment. We have received several comments via email. I'll just acknowledge that those have been received and read by the commission, and appreciate those that have reached out. I think to start out here, let's, let's hear from staff. Josh, is that okay?
So at the last County Commission meeting on the 21st of February, this item was heard. The public hearing was held. The public hearing for public comment was opened and closed. If additional public comment is gonna be received, you'll need to vote to reopen the public hearing for additional public comment, for, for the public to comment if, if you so choose. The information that you requested that staff obtained, I reached out and talked to, I always forget his name.
Lance Tyrell.
Thank you. I always wanna say Lance Haskell, but I know that's not right. So thank you. Lance Tyrell. He sent me that document, that document, I forwarded to each of the county commissioners. I followed that up with another email today with the page for the map that shows what it's, what it's supposed to be designated, as well as a page that held the text that described what it was gonna be. If you give me a minute, I can open that up. The exact text for the area in question is called Town Center Support, and it's defined as follows. In that draft, it states, "The land surrounding the town center between Old Highway Road and I-84 is an opportunity to provide additional commercial uses and mixed-use residential neighborhoods and housing options. While the town center will be focused on retail, community services, and amenities, these support areas can provide other important commercial uses and help diversify the tax base in the area. These areas are also supportive of higher residential densities than other identified residential areas." So in answer to your question from last week, the consulting firm that is drafting this believes that this area should go to commercial, but could also support, include as supportive uses such as high-density residential.
And to clarify, that's the organization that's helping us with both the Peterson and Mountain Green small area plans, as well as the County General Plan, correct?
I don't know about the County General Plan. I think it's a separate consulting firm.
I thought it was the same. Am I wrong?
I think it's different.
Yeah, I, I hadn't talked to Lance Tyrell until the area plans, but there's another lady that I've spoken to about the general plan draft.
And the language that he quoted was from page 36 of that study.
That's correct.
And I believe that the property that's the subject of this application on the map is both town center and town center support. So it's, splits it.
Okay. Josh, any other comments before we?
No. Staff still recommends approval.
Okay. Let's, let's give the applicant the opportunity to address the commission, and then we can move to, now while we already have held a public hearing, we did advertise this as a public hearing, so I'm inclined to suggest that we reopen the public hearing. Okay, so let's hear from the applicant.
Good afternoon. It's a full house this time around. My name's Thomas Hunt, and applicant on this project. Just wanna thank Josh for kinda introducing this project. To give a little bit of clarification, in the last few weeks, I've received quite a few, few questions on this project. First off, this, this property currently is owned by Mark Nelson, but he is not the one that is going to be doing the development. He is selling this to, to, to a different development firm, so he will not be the developer on this project. Secondly, I've, I've asked to be a little more straightforward on what exactly the site plan is going to look like here. And as I've expressed to those people, if this rezone gets approved, it goes through a development agreement where there's back and forth between the developer and staff of exactly how that site plan is going to be laid out. In this zone, there's, it's an 18-page document that gives specifications of the amount of landscape, the type of landscape, the trail systems, the amount of commercial that is needed, the type of architectural requirements that will be required, the, where the roadway networks are, how big the blocks are, where the roads and everything is going, and so there's, there's really not a, a site plan that can be provided, because that will all be determined in a development agreement with the staff of the county. Our intent is to do townhomes with a lot of commercial that supports those townhomes and the existing residences in Mountain Green. We, we would like to put commercial on the far west end of the project and taper that with residential towards Old Highway Road, which is where residential is currently. How that exactly will look, that will be determined in a development agreement with, with the county. We feel like that that's a, a benefit and a positive that this goes into a development agreement, because the county has a say in what it's going to look like and how it's going to function. Where it's wedged in between Old Highway Road and Interstate 84, we don't feel like it's a great place for large, single-family lots. I don't know many people that would want to live in a single-family lot that is half an acre that's wedged in between those two main, main roadways. an acre that's wedged in between those two main roadways. If it were to go all commercial, you would have commercial right up against that roadway, which single-family homes would be looking at. And there's a lot less requirements in a commercial zone, straight-up commercial zone. So we feel like this is a win-win for both the county and the residents to where we can work together to provide that buffer between single-family lots, to townhomes, to bigger commercial as it builds from east to west. With that, I don't know if you have any other questions for me before it gets opened up to the public. But we're just excited to be back here again and hopefully make a decision.
So you're saying you're going to have smaller, single-family lots towards the eastern end? That's your plan? I mean, your hope?
Residential.
Yeah, residential.
Not necessarily single-family lots. We have zero intent of doing apartments, but it would most likely be apartment, or townhomes on the east side that would then transition to commercial. That being said, it all goes through a development agreement where we need to agree upon that with the county, with staff.
Other questions for the applicant?
So I guess what you're saying then is the townhomes is the highest density that it would be?
The only way that would change is if a ton of it has to be dedicated to single-family lots. If we did a ton of single-family lots, we would need a higher density to try and get a few more units in it. I doubt we would even do apartments at that time, but if a good majority of it has to go to single-family lots, we might try and make up density elsewhere. But we would hope that we could do townhomes to get away from that for sure. We don't want apartments here. I don't think this is the best place for apartments.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
Josh, before we go into public comment, I would love for you to just take just a moment and maybe explain to the public what the process is at this point. If, in both scenarios, if a rezone is allowed or if it's not allowed, what's the next step here? If the rezone is denied, then any application that proposes the exact same thing has to wait two years before they come back. They can change their proposal and come back with something else, and then it's considered a new application. If the application is approved and the rezoning to town center is approved, then they still have to go through the development agreement. Since the development agreement is entitlement-based, meaning they're modifying the entitlements to the zoning of the property, it also would have to be a public hearing. Those public hearings would be held much like this rezoning. That public hearing would go through the planning commission, and then it would go through the county commission. During that development agreement, there will probably be quite a few work sessions that will not be open to the public for public discussion. But once those work sessions are done and the county and the applicant believe that they've got a development agreement that both parties are happy with, then it would have to go through the public hearing process one more time. That public hearing process is much like a rezoning since it affects the entitlements. When that is complete, then they can start the administrative process, which means submitting for subdivision and site plan applications. Does that answer your question?
It does. Maybe just as a point of reference, the Rome subdivision that we just talked about, a portion of, was, is part of the town center zoning, so there's some similarities here in terms of how that's worked. That particular subdivision, or particular project, has come back to the commission multiple times, both for, and the planning commission, I might add, for development agreement. And then each phase of the subdivision has also come back before the commission and the planning commission for comments and adjustments, and many adjustments have been made over time.
That's correct.
So I guess what I'm getting at here is there's still a lot of county and public input on these projects, on subdivision projects in general, and on development projects as they progress. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay. With that?
However, once it's rezoned, it becomes administrative, not legislative.
Correct. Yes. That's a good comment to make. Once the property is rezoned, it becomes administrative, which means as long as the landowner checks the boxes that correlate to our code, then they are entitled to do those items. So they still have to comply with the code, and they have to comply with the development agreement, but it does grant them some entitlements. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a question for Josh. How soon? You should just stay up here until we go into public hearing.
That's okay. I need my steps.
How soon are we to completing the general plan for the county?
That's a good question. When I interviewed for this job nine months ago, eight, 10 months ago, I read the draft general plan, and I discussed it as part of my interview with you. There's a lot of issues with it. And without the staff, I haven't had the chance to go through it. So I've written about 13 general plans in my career from start to finish. The fastest one I was able to get through, from drafting it to complete it, was nine months. But that was when I worked for a consulting firm, and that was my job. It's a little bit different here. So I would need time to go through it, edit it, propose those changes to the planning commission in public hearings before it even got to you.
So what about, when are we going to hear the plans, the area plans? Not just the one we've seen here, but all the other area plans of the county?
That is also a good question.
Because, I mean, this all bases my decision. Is this, you know, if we don't have the plan, we're basing everything upon the 2010 plan?
The 2010 plan calls for this property to be commercial.
Right.
Town center is a commercial district. In my opinion, professional opinion, that is in line with your general plan and your zoning ordinance.
Right.
So that being said, the area plan for Mountain Green and Enterprise, there is a draft. There's issues with that that I think need to be addressed since the draft proposes to designate private property as open space. If you propose something that takes away all development potential for a piece of property that is private and you're not the owner, that's considered taking. And so the issue there is we don't want a plan that proposes a taking. So there's some things that need to be changed in that plan, including the mapping stuff. So I don't know how long it's going to take them to finish that plan or to make the edits that I'm proposing. They may not even, they may not make those changes and come to you with the proposed plan as it is. I don't know. I know the area plans, the other area plans are in progress. Some of the area plans, I've been told, are complete, but I've asked for the opportunity to review them before we bring them forward. I haven't reviewed any of them yet.
I'm just a little concerned of the direction of the study, the area plan for the Mountain Green area and Peterson area. And based upon the surveys of those areas and many of the complaints we've received or concerns, not necessarily complaints, I'm not sure that this, at this point, that the proposal to rezone is within what the surveys and the IBI study has designated.
Let's be clear.
Okay.
That draft is not open to the public.
Right.
Nobody has even reviewed it. There were some surveys. We don't know how many people responded to that survey. We don't know how many properties it was sent to. I'm talking about me personally. The other thing is, it hasn't been adopted yet.
I know that.
So to base your decision on a plan that's not adopted, I'm not sure I would go down that route. You have adopted plans. You have an applicant that has submitted an application based on adopted plans. You have an adopted general plan, and you have adopted area plans, and they've relied on those adopted plans to base their decision on purchasing a piece of property. I would strongly recommend that you do not base your decision on a draft plan that has not been adopted or has gone through the public hearing process. That's just my recommendation.
Okay. The only problem is, is based upon the amount of people that are here and all the emails we've received, I have a big concern about, are we really trying to accomplish what we want in that area of the county? And I don't care if it's the 2000 general plan, the 2010 general plan, or the 2020 general plan that we have not completed, or the 2040 plan. Right now, I'm concerned, and I know this isn't public, but the thing is, this is what the people want.
Maybe.
Maybe. Well, we could hear it from them, and we will in just a minute.
That's true. There are a lot in the audience.
But what I'm saying is, are we really looking at the whole picture of what we're trying to accomplish in Mountain Green? And so that is my opinion. And for me to make a decision based upon, and I mean, to begin with, I was for this project. I may be for it still. But what I'm saying is, I had a vision of what Mountain Green was and should be. Right now, I don't think we have a plan put on paper as to what we want to accomplish in Mountain Green. And until I see that, I don't think we should do a darn thing down there. So that's my opinion to you guys. And I mean, I'm adamant about it right now. I have had, almost to the point, I would rather give up my position here at this point because of the turmoil it's causing in the Mountain Green area.
So I'm going to disagree with you on the not having a plan. There is a plan in place. Now, whether that's an updated plan or not is probably the discussion. We do have a county general plan. It was adopted in 2010. There was input taken from the public at the time. So the plan is in place. Our future land use map has been informed by that plan. So I will disagree on that point that there isn't a plan. There's certainly a plan. Whether, the question is whether that plan is still relevant or not, I don't know, but that is the plan that we currently have adopted and is in place. So with that, are there any other comments or questions before we move to public hearing? Okay. We'll have more discussion after. Absolutely. Okay, with that, we'll look for a motion to move into public hearing.
So move.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We'll move into public hearing. I will ask that you please refrain from clapping and loud noises and hooting and hollering, whether you agree or disagree. Please, let's keep this professional, okay? Thank you. Thanks, Josh. But yeah, I think you're good for now. Don't go too far, though, Josh.
Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. And I don't want you to think I'm just noise. I read your minutes. I have just a couple of things to add. I just wanted to say, not much was said about the negative recommendation that came from the planning commission. They had a good, healthy, robust discussion and recommended denial because this was not in the area that they considered the town center to be when they spent all of their time working on the town center ordinance. There are already a large number of approved areas for multiplexes in Mountain Green. Rome, Blair Gardner's Peace, Johnson C.D. I think the community would rather see single-family dwellings. I read your minutes, and to be clear, the county council wanted the area to be commercial. It was a gravel pit at the time. I think the public and the people who lived there would like to see homes. In your minutes, you said that I wanted it to be commercial, but that's what the county council at the time determined for the future land use map. If there is a new area plan, it has not yet been seen by the public nor the planning commission. The outreach to the public was via a postcard. The public has not seen anything from that to date. The draft may change based on public input through the planning process. The development agreement comes forth after the rezone. There is not a lot of room for negotiation with the developer at that point. It is not the same as the process that goes with the RSD or your resort zone. If the developer proposes something that fits under the new zone, but the commission is uncomfortable with it at that time, the commission will have to approve it under the subdivision process as long as it complies with the code. The development agreement addresses how it looks rather than how dense it is. The code addresses the density. The developer had some things to say, but is not bound by what he says he will do. He can do whatever is allowed in that zone. I do not believe the development agreement goes through a public hearing. Correct me if I'm wrong. Show me where it says that. I agreed with Matt said, that at that point, it's an administrative, not a legislative issue. I think, I want you to know, I do appreciate all of the time that you're putting into this and all the energy that you're putting into this. Please don't take my comments as being in any way negative towards you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Thanks.
I don't want to take too much time because this is a rerun. You guys probably recognize me, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I do want to make one thing clear.
Mike, will you just say your name for the public?
Matt Lasuda.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I should have assumed that you did, why I was. I think this is my third time at the ball, but so anyway. My concern is, is that the town center was born, the concept of a town center was born when Trappers Luke tied onto Old Highway. That was the seminal event that started this ball rolling. That was 30 years ago. I remember it well. I'm concerned more the precedent that may set by having a rezone. Because if we have a rezone, what's the next guy going to come? We talked about the different plans and things like that. I have read them. I realize they're not approved, all that kind of stuff. But I'd hate to see this rezone set the precedent protecting away what we want in Mountain Green. Because it's not just going to be this one, it'll be the next one. And then because they did this happen, we can do it again. We lose total control of our community. And I don't think that's what anybody who's here wants to see. But thank you very much for your time. Appreciate your efforts. I can share that some pressure is behind it, some frustration, some exaggeration. But somebody's got to be the government, and you guys are loyal enough to do it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse Drage from Mountain Green. Kind of a rerun for me as well, so I'm sure there's a bunch of topics that will be hit by other people, and so I'm just going to discuss my main issues. I was asked by a family who couldn't attend to read off a few things in their name. Is that all right if I do that before I speak about my stuff? Okay. All right, so this is, I'm going to try to summarize this letter as best I can. It's from the Bowman family. They live in Mountain Green. These are their family's main concerns, just to summarize. With the proposal of rezoning this property from commercial to town center, the biggest concerns being the amount of additional high-density housing this would bring to Mountain Green. Here is a list of items for which this concerns us. Strain on water resources, strain on Morgan County schools, will we need additional paid police, will we need additional emergency services, fire, paramedics, which I will say, they're my neighbors. I love them. But I have heard them speak quite a bit recently about how we may need to start moving into a paid force because of the increase in development in the area. So just a side note. Increase in traffic, wear and tear on roads, need, potential need for road widening or a traffic light at the corner of Old Highway and Cottonwood Canyon Road, reduction of potential tax revenue, change of the peaceful fear and feel and atmosphere of Mountain Green. We understand that Mountain Green will grow, however, it can grow in a way that doesn't change what Mountain Green is and why people want to live in this area. Additional high-density will undoubtedly change what makes Mountain Green, Mountain Green. Sincerely, Vance Bowman and family. That's from Vance. As far as I'm concerned... As far as I'm concerned, I have similar concerns regarding traffic. I have similar concerns regarding tax revenue. I think I mentioned in the past meeting that I would prefer not to live across the street from Station Park, and I stand by that. However, commercial there does hold some benefit to my family and to our tax base. 150 to 200 townhomes, that does not hold any benefit to me. That's 24/7 traffic. It's decreased potential tax revenue. It's widening of an already very busy road, which there are a lot of accidents on right at that corner. Like, it's often, these poor guys have, it's our first year in Mountain Green, and they've been digging people out all winter. My biggest thing, I understand Mountain Green is growing. I understand that plans are going to change. I feel that there is too much going on currently and what we have zoned as our town center to be in a position to make a decision on expanding that originally zoned area. I'm not saying I'm going to be against it in five to 10 years. I don't know, but I would like to see the completion or at least a good step towards, you know, that direction of the originally zoned area for this type of housing. Let's see how it affects us. Let's see how commercial gets off. Are they creating good tax base? Is it enough? Do we need more? Do we need less? What do we need? Because right now, we don't know, and I think it is way too early in the process to be making a decision that is beneficial and thoughtful. And I just think we need to be careful, take a step back, let's let things get rolling, and then we can bring this back up in a few years and see if it's actually a necessity. Not one side of the road, you know, hard either way, but now is not the time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jessie.
My name is Dan Colad. I've been in Mountain Green for 40 years. I've seen a great transition during this time. I also taught at Park City in the 1970s, when it was a small, remote area of mining and farming. And then came the growth. To me, that seemed like I had no control. And what I saw of that was chaos. People come here, as said, not only for the beauty, but for the family orientation here. I always wished that we would have a sign as they enter in Morgan County that would say, "Welcome to Morgan County, where families are our greatest resource." I wish truly, growth is okay, but it needs to be controlled. And if we look at Park City as an example, I am concerned about the ski resorts and the influx of people that will come in, that I don't believe is conducive to what the people of Mountain Green desire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colad.
I think you've all heard the concerns. I'll just reiterate those. When I sat and thought about the other night, I counted about seven, seven different proposed, not approved yet, development in the area. And it's a lot, it's a lot for the area. The burden on the infrastructure, water, and also our rural atmosphere. So we'll keep it simple and just add, not for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia.
My name is George Pedersen, and we've lived up here about six years. And there's been some big changes in just those six years. A big subdivision going down the street, and every day, we see these big dump trucks going by, and I realize that has to happen. I hate to see more future development go in where we have to rezone to get more things in, until we get a new intersection off the freeway, 84, to take the traffic that's going up to Snow Basin. Have you guys have ever driven that road about 4:30 in the afternoon, when the cars are just streaming down there? You can't, that intersection on the old highways, a mess. And I've seen many, many accidents on the old road because people are driving too fast. They're wanting to get on 84. And that's a real problem, too. I know we need development, and I know we need to do it in a very systematic manner, but I hate to see us go ahead with new development until we finish what we already have on the table. We're going to get a new market someday, and I don't know when that's going to happen, but Lee's Market should be coming in. That'll save people from having to drive into Morgan to get groceries, or having to drive down to Auden to get groceries. These are things that need to occur, and then we need to look back and see whether the development that is now being proposed is correct or not. But I think we need time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Pedersen or Patterson?
Pedersen.
Pedersen, thank you.
P U D E R.
Thank you.
My name is Carla Burke. I moved to Mountain Green about a year ago. I'm Jessie's mom. And we went door-to-door knocking this past weekend, handing out flyers. I've actually handed out quite a few flyers and had quite a few doors slammed in my face. But I was surprised at how many people would stand on their step and talk to me about what was going on. Almost everybody answered their door, almost everybody talked. The people in Mountain Green are not in favor of high dens, any more high-density housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
Hadn't planned on this, I'm not sure exactly how this will flow, but I live right there across the street from where this is being proposed. And a couple of things that I'm concerned about, the brother, Mr. Pedersen that were, Pedersen that was up here, has a very good comment about the traffic already because at that time of day, trying to get out of my driveway onto the road can take a while sometimes because there's just one right after another, whether it's those coming home or coming back from skiing all day, or people coming home, or whatever it is. So that concerns me. The other thing, and I'm not, I'm not totally sure on how this stands, but I know with Bonnie Brown, Bonnie Brown has a right-of-way through that property, right down through there, so she can access her property across 84. And I want to know how that's going to be affected because for her to take equipment and trailers and everything else down there that she has to do to take care of her cattle on the other side, and to be able to have to drive that through a set of townhomes and that, how are they going to make a road, you know, large enough? And how many of the people living in those townhomes would be even, want to be there for that to go through? I mean, I don't know the whole gist with the right-of-way and how that works, and I do, again, I don't know a plan for it, what it would be, but that's one of my big, two of my big concerns, is the traffic and that there. And the third one is always water. There's water issues that are going on up there right now. There doesn't seem to be enough of it, but yet, we seem to be pushing forward and figuring, well, we'll figure that out down the road. I think it's something that needs to be considered, needs to be looked at before anything is approved and before the change in zoning is taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a couple houses, a couple doors down from Jessie. My name's Dan Zemke. When I moved into Mountain Green 48 years ago, or thereabouts, it was kind of, the suburbs, nobody heard of it. I mean, it was out there very rural, right? But I learned to love it. I bought another house there, had my mother move out, and the kids are now living in the first house. And it's still a great place, but I've been watching it become not Mountain Green that I knew then, you know? That cool breeze in the summer, every evening, you know, the climate's changing, so is the neighborhood. And I don't think everybody who's out there, moved out there to have high-density city dwellers moving out there. And I say city dwellers not as derogatory, it's a way of life, right? Pass me the toilet paper out the window, you know? It's handy, but I'd rather have enough of my own, you know? Anyway, I think you get the point. Organizations, whether it's management or government, are considered success, how much money, how much budget, how many people they're over, and how many laws were passed, you know, that kind of thing. To me, success is how happy the people who are under that control are and remain, and how well off are they on the standard of living, you know, I mean, health-wise and just general happiness. I think that should be the goal on all these things, all the planning. I like the idea of the exit from the highway to go to Snow Basin in the winter and to Pineview in the summer, and get those people through there as quickly as possible. And put the road signs up for the motorcycles who tour through there all the time, that enjoy the neighborhood, please be quiet and respect, you know, children and old people, like me. I think you get my drift. This is too much change too fast, and the standard is, let's pack as many as we can because we need the housing. You know, we need the housing, but we should have places that are a little more laid-back where people can choose to come there and be undisturbed by the changes due to other people's demands to have more housing. I'm starting to ramble, which I'll do often enough, and my three minutes are up, but that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Zemke.
This is the first time I've been here, so bear with me. I hadn't prepared to say anything, but my name's Lynn Pedersen, from Mountain Green. I have lived in Mountain Green now six and a half years. I moved to Utah about 40 years ago. I moved to Sandy. I lived off of 90th South in Sandy. Have you driven down there lately?
Yeah, if you don't want to.
Have you tried to get off the 90th Street or the 106th Street exit? That was 40 years ago. There was absolutely nothing west of I-15. When they put in the Jordan River Temple, there was no building around it. There was nothing there. That's 40 years. And 40 years, you think, well, you can think it's a short amount of time or a long amount of time, however you want to look at it. The people of Mountain Green in 40 years do not want that kind of growth. We don't want, we know that growth is going to happen, and we want some growth, but we don't want it uncontrolled. We want it planned, we want it organized, and we want it systematic, so that you're not increasing more traffic, so you're not using the water, you're not doing all those things that people have said something about. You know, we can't think five years in advance. We have to think what's going to happen in 10 years, 20 years. And it needs to be what's right for the people and what's right for our county, our state, and not just because it's going to bring in more money and more people in some high-density housing. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Amber Morrison, resident of Mountain Green. I pretty much have very similar, if not the same exact concerns that have already been said, so I won't repeat them. But I did want to add that my husband and I are, you know, we're hearing from some people who've been here 40 years, we're hearing from some people who've been here a year. My husband and I have been here a couple of years, so we are newer, we're newer to Mountain Green. And the reason that we moved to Mountain Green was because, to us, it was rural, to get away from the traffic, to get away from the noise, to get away from the pollution. And hearing about all these rezones, it's not why we moved here. And, you know, we moved here to raise, to create and grow and raise our family in an area that doesn't have that pollution and noise. And it's quickly sounding like that's, it's just not what we pictured for life. Thanks.
Thank you, Amber.
I'm a Mountain Green resident for, continuously for six years now. Actually grew up in Mountain Green, went to school, Morgan High School, and moved away to go to college, and from there, went to Phoenix, big city, and Seattle, big city. And ultimately, I moved back to Mountain Green because I liked the lifestyle in Mountain Green, and I didn't want to live in a big city like Phoenix or Seattle, and I still don't. And for this reason, I'm opposed to the rezone. I don't want to live a two-minute walk from the town center. I also share the same concerns. I watched Mr. Archbald here, and here we get killed Sunday by a couple of cars who were in a big hurry to get to Snow Basin, so the infrastructure that we don't currently have for more housing concerns me deeply, is the water issues, as I'm a water engineer and I think about these things 40 hours a week. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter.
Good afternoon, or evening. My name is Steve Sumrill. My wife and I moved up here, oh, seven years ago, but yet, we had actually started looking in Mountain Green back in the early 80s, when I first got out of the military. I can remember the days when Trappers Loup was a dirt trail. We used to play on it at that time, and my mom and daddy used to as well. One of the reasons we moved up here was, as was mentioned earlier, about families. The area is fantastic for the, I guess, the younger generation coming up here and actually looking for a good place to raise their family. And we've seen a lot where the families not only grow here, but their kids end up staying here as well, in other homes and that. My concerns are just like everybody else's. One, last year, we went through the horrendous lack of water, but yet, we can still find ways to, it seems like money makes the water. That's what the construction business seems like, seems to be. Because they have all the money to come in here and build, but where are we going to get the water from? Last year, the last couple of years, we've been short on the water. That's a big thing for all of us. Emergency services is another one. And I had to use them a couple of times, not really wanting to, but I did. And right now, we've got a volunteer fire department, firehouse, and as well as the emergency services for that. Sewer, where is our water treatment facility big enough to keep compounding it with more I just, we moved up here just for the calm and the cool breeze at night that was mentioned earlier. Being able to walk around our neighborhood, we've got fantastic neighbors, but if you throw in these townhomes where a lot of them are going to be rented, that we see down by Smithville or Smith Park, you don't, the people that are renting don't have the same feelings as what the locals do that own. Not saying that they couldn't, but it's just not the same network, basically. Not saying that they couldn't, but it's just not the same network, basically. I guess that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Hi, my name is Leslie Hurst. I am a lifelong Morgan resident, and just had a couple of concerns about some of the information proposed, is that this zone would be commercial, unless commercial isn't needed, and then it has the option to roll into townhome or residential. And I'm not really sure how that's relevant. I think if we're zoning something commercial, let's leave it commercial until commercial can fill that capacity. And I think the idea that dense housing needs to be around the commercial, all the commercial that we currently have in Mountain Green, including an airport, sits adjacent to single-family homes. I'm not really sure why dense housing needs to be part of the town center, where it seems to me that residents in Mountain Green are pretty comfortable with single-family home development. And I just think our other concern would be to be cautious that we're not harmful to those that are existing, that are living there, that the impacts that this causes does not cause harm.
My name is Randy Moss, and I'm a, live in Mountain Green, been here about 11 years. We moved down from Alaska, and we chose Mountain Green because it reminds us of a lot of places in Alaska. And I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, I'm a psychologist, so I won't talk about water and all those things as been adequate. What I see your job as is as the metronome for change. And every time I drive up the old highway, I'm reminded as we come to the Rome area, how much change is happening even in the time I've been here. And everywhere we go, change is an underlying stressor that tears communities apart, that impact families negatively. And we know the benefits of having growth that is measured and necessary and planned in a way that is going to benefit the mental health and the physical health. Huge study just came out out of John Hopkins that showed that having open spaces, having yards with trees, having access to places where we had community and we could get together and talk together instead of just living and moving apart, actually increases the likelihood of our growing old and happy, decreases things like cancer and COPD and a variety of other kinds of things, helps our children become more solid. So one of the things that I think is, I hear from my neighbors and from these individuals here, is all of this change, the world is changing very quickly, and the change that we have literally in front of us as we all drive down the old highway, reminds us of further losses, and adding to that with high density actually creates a stressor that you would not understand directly, that I see in my offices when people come to talk to me. And I believe that it's your obligation to be the metronome for our mental and our physical health by making sure that we can handle all the changes that comes. Change will come, but doesn't need to be a flood.
My name is Shannon Key, and I've lived in Mountain Green for 13 years. And the reason why I'm here is I'm a realtor, and I hear what all of y'all are saying. I love where I live. We moved here because we had open fields facing us on three sides. There's a reason why we're here. But there is a concern. You know, we're talking about having your kids come and stay and live in Mountain Green, but the problem is, in February, the median sales for a home was $675,000. You have to have a, an income of $120,000 to buy a $675,000 home. That is at 6% interest, we're a little bit higher than that now, and that's with zero percent, you know, or zero debt-to-income problems, it's with 20% down, and so we're concerned. High-density housing is a way to solve that. We are, and I don't bite my head off, I'm just trying to explain that we are 40,000 homes short in the state of Utah. Let me just find my notes, because it's important to me. Two-thirds of Utah's growth comes from within our state. We have millennials growing up, we have Gen Z's growing up, and where are they going to buy? You want them to stay here in Mountain Green? I want my son to stay here. I want my grandchildren to stay here. But how are they going to afford it? It has to be high-density housing. Now, yes, I'm not saying it needs to be in the city center, but we carefully need to plan it out. Everyone else has said this, I'm marrying it. There's something that Governor Cox and Speaker Wilson and President Adams put into play with the recent legislative sessions, and that's House Bill 240, which has passed. It went, it's now enrolled in the Senate, and it's a $50 million budget that has, that's going to allow for $20,000 grant to first-time homebuyers. It has to be less than 45,000, 400 and 50,000 of a home. It has to be a new home, it has to be a first-time buyer, and that $20,000 grant is payable when they resell their home. It could be 20 years, but here's the idea. The idea of this is that this $450,000 home, and I pray that Mountain Green might be able to have that affordability eventually with high-density housing. It doesn't have to be in their city center, it can be very carefully planned by you guys. I don't envy you at all, you have a really hard job. But it's, the idea is it's a first-time family, first-time buyer, they will move up and eventually be able to buy and afford a home here in Mountain Green or in Morgan. Now, some of this, improving density doesn't mean apartments, it means single-family homes, and that means townhomes, condos. Some people have mentioned water, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of high-density homes, they use less water. Yes, inside, we all flush our toilets, we all take a bath, do our dishes, but watering the grass is a little bit different in high-density housing. Here's one thing I just want you all to think about, and I'm here to offer a hand, provide statistics for you. There's a few realtors on, sorry, I need to go back up a little bit. I'm on the Government Affairs Committee, I'm on the Board of Directors, so I'm here, and many other realtors in many communities in Utah are out doing the same thing I'm doing. And I wanted to jump in on this statement in this city center because it is about high-density housing, and it doesn't have to be here exactly, it could be anywhere. We have nice high-density housing in Morgan and some in Mountain Green. Yes, some of them are rentals, but they could control that, right? There's a study in Kaysville, just, you know, 20 minutes away, and I know I'm a buck, I know my time, I saw it. Here's the problem, that there's schools, elementary schools in Kaysville that are closing because they don't have enough young families that can afford to live in that neighborhood. What are we going to do with our elementary school if our kids can't buy a house? Where are we going to have any kids in that elementary school unless you're bringing your grandkids to live with you? And that's part of it. Anyway, I'm extending a hand to you, to work with you, and anyone else, you know, wants to talk about this, I'm here to help, and that was just my two cents. Sorry, went over.
Thank you, Shannon.
Hello, I'm Therese Bohus, I'm a Mountain Green resident since 2005. My husband and I own a home in the Cottonwoods Phase 1 area, and we had a little short break away for me to finish my Air Force career in 2019. When we moved back, despite lots of rental visits, when we moved back, we were just really surprised. We had the great opportunity, when we lived here the first time, we say, to participate with the American Institute of Architects. They came in, offered a free town planning session, gave Mountain, gave Morgan County a town center plan for Mountain Green, which we thought was amazing, would change probably over the years before it might be accepted and implemented, but to our surprise, we were gone for 10 years, and by the time we got back, no one even knew what we were talking about. So really, just what I, what I hear, and I echo a lot of the comments that have been made this evening, and what I hear is that we're not happy with the development plan yet, that participation, that we had the opportunity, and there have been opportunities for inputs on surveys since we've moved back, but that hasn't been heard, and there's been no movement forward on adjusting a plan that would be acceptable to the residents of Mountain Green. I don't want to belabor the points, but I think you've heard that folks aren't happy. And so I would like to see some priority from the county on moving forward on finalizing a plan that's acceptable to the community that addresses all of these concerns. My own neighbors have said their kids can't move to Mountain Green when they grow up. I get it. But, but my other neighbors have said, where's the water? And my other neighbors have said, I can't get out of town on a powder day. Right? So I mean, all of those things, and so I would ask all of you to prioritize getting to a plan that's acceptable to the community so that we can have thoughtful infrastructure development preceding thoughtful residential and commercial development in Mountain Green. Thank you.
My name is Arthur Wall. We moved, my husband and I moved here in 2006, and we have found this community to be welcoming. They're some of the best people I've ever met in my life. They have, we live on Ivy Avenue, which is over, across the street from the McMullen Farm, and my grandchildren had the privilege of going to their farm and seeing baby pigs born, and seeing, being able to feed the sheep, the baby sheep that were little lambs that the mother had kicked out. And, and they went out and saw a colt that was born first thing that morning, things that I had never even thought of, let alone experienced. And so the thing that we have loved about this community is that it is, has farms, and it has animals, and it is peace and quiet, except for the freeway. And if you think that putting in all this, these housing units is going to help us, and it might in some ways, but you just visualize that canyon, the traffic going up and down that canyon every day. I have counted for weeks now, as we've gone down and come back up, at least 28 long haulers going down one way, as I have started at the top of the bridge and ended up at the opening of the, of the canyon. And it's pretty scary when, when the storms come to have that much traffic, let alone, not to even suggest that the skiers, how many of them are coming up and down during the ski season. And we're glad to see them come up and down, but it's a little scary having to drive that drive. I, what I see happening is that our taxes will go up. There's no way you can not have that happen. The other thing that I see happening is, I lived on two sides of Salt Lake City, and in both circumstances, when, when, in crowded into a subdivision, after a while, the homes get older, people with lower incomes move in, and that's okay, but they don't keep up their places. And before long, it becomes more of a crime area that brings crime and stealing and into the area, and we don't have that up here much. We do have some, but it isn't something that we are really worried about at this point because most people know everybody, and, and they're, the schools are very good, and with more children, will it overpower the classroom sizes? These are some of the questions that have been coming to our minds as we've looked at this, and we just think that more information needs to be brought to the table, and that it needs to really be thought through before you act and make a decision because it doesn't sound very comforting to us that live here. And I have enjoyed it, and I've enjoyed the people very much, and I'd like to keep it that way.
Thank you, Mrs. Wall.
My name is Rodney Taggart. I've lived in the Mountain Green area for a number of years. I've raised my family here in this county. They've attended the Morgan County Schools up here. I have a son that is in his mid-30s, and when he was a young child, he would come up here and play with some of his friends. And he would come home and he would say, "I don't like the big city." He was referring, we were in the country. Things have changed, and growth happens. And about, a couple of weeks ago, about 8:30, I was, I was going down, down the canyon, and traffic was backed up to the rest stop. And I was just thinking, how, how much further will the traffic be backed up with more growth? Will it be the power plant? Will it be the, the mouth of the canyon? There's got to be a point where you say, okay, we need to think about this, and we need to not, not rush things through, and then 10 years, 20 years from now, look back and say, I wish we would have thought that out a little better. So I, I agree with most of the things that have been said. As far as low-income housing, I, or lower-income housing, I know that that is a problem, but I can guarantee you, if townhomes go in, they probably will not sell for under $450,000. So our kids probably still won't be able to live here. Anyway, thank you.
My name is Chuck Limper. We've lived here since 1980-something, and we've raised four of our six kids here in Mountain Green, and three of them have moved back. And I want to thank Commissioner Fapprell for his listening to the citizens of the, of the community, and it seems like we have too many people who want to build multiple family houses here. And maybe we need some, maybe we need a few, but I don't know if we need as many as people are saying they want to build. I had a stroke in 2019, so I can't remember what I was going to say, but we thank Brother Fapprell, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Limper.
Okay, we have heard from 20 of you, and we've spent almost an hour. I think we're going to cut it off after you, if that's okay, unless there's somebody who really has a strong feeling that they'd like to say something that they haven't already heard.
Put your comments to me at all.
I can assure you that we've been, we've been taking copious notes, I have a long list of notes. Commissioner Anderson, I can see, has been typing his notes. We're paying attention and listening to you, so you have been heard, but at a certain point, we want to cut this off. So if there is somebody that has a really, really strong urge to speak after you, raise your hand, otherwise, we're going to stop our public comment after this, okay? Okay? Okay, we got one more.
Okay, I'm Lynn Craggar-Tenny, and I know most of you here because I was born and raised in Morgan. And so I appreciate the opportunity to have a public hearing and that you guys are listening to us. Been here for my whole life, and was a Morgan person, and then now I'm a Mountain Green person. Been here in my home for over 30 years down there. I am on the end of the water line. I am the person that does report when sand gets into the water system because there's just not enough water, and it just pulls at a certain point, and I have to report to the water company that it's now time to drain out the fire hydrants because there's just not that kind of control. Also, the water pressure, because we keep having more and more people come, have to keep building more and more lines. There's not enough water pressure for those. I think you need to take into consideration the current taxpayers and who's supporting the infrastructure that's down there currently. Think about what their lives are impacted at. Also, I would like to have at some point know where we are on the list for the Highway 84 exit that is going to come in through the Trapper's Loop. Right now, I understand that's kind of been put a little bit further down on the list as a priority. I don't know. I would like to know what that would be. Right now, the infrastructure on Old Highway Road, it was there 100 years ago. It is still supporting the same amount of people, I mean, it's still supporting the same kind of a traffic that you've got tons and tons more people. I live off of Cottonwood Road, and there have had to been construction signs put there that said, when Cottonwood is being developed up into the Cottonwoods, you cannot completely have all of those construction trucks come there. I will tell you, the construction is going to come. It's not going to be able to be controlled on the traffic flow. You can tell them where you want to go, but I'll tell you what, there are going to be shortcuts. Cottonwood, Little Cottonwood Canyon Road is becoming the second highway. And so even though you have infrastructure, you need to think about what infrastructure is in place before you welcome all these other people that are there. You want to just bring out the bottom of the Highlands and Trappers, multiple, multiple accidents that need to be thought about. And you want to have young people come in, you're just putting in and setting them up to fail. I think, I also think that single-family homes, I'm for, I am for growth. I'm for that kind of development, but I think that a while ago, you had to put a moratorium. You have to think about, how fast are we moving? Where's the infrastructure? What do we need to do to support what we're trying to get in? And so I am against the rezone. I think it needs to be delayed. I am not for the dense, dense housing. I am for a single family. And I do not, I'm not against growth, but I think it needs to be done wisely. I think that you need to think about where we are, especially like with traffic flow and those kinds of things, before you go on something like this. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Lynn.
My name is Bonnie Brown. I already submitted my feelings to the commissioners, and I appreciate the opportunity to have been able to do that. I'll make it short because I think my comments to them were from my heart and how I feel. My ancestors came to Mountain Green in the 1800s, and so I have a very strong connection to Mountain Green, probably more emotional than anything, but, and I'm probably older than most here. But I love Mountain Green, and I've had bishops tell me that I helped design Mountain Green. And if that was the case, I want to put in my feelings that I feel like Mountain Green is a place of beauty, it's a place to cherish. I think we need to recognize those people who tried so hard to establish a community that was fitting for that population, and I think they did it for this generation so that we can stand up for those things that we believe in. Before my father passed away, he said to me, he said, Bonnie, accept change. Don't let it make you bitter, but stand up for those things that you believe are right. And I think it's only right that the things that have been said here tonight by many, many citizens, that that needs to be taken into consideration. I think things are too premature at this time, and I'm in the minority. I have a herd of cows, and I love my cows, and I want to be able to continue to do that. I don't want my land devalued because of things that may come in, but that's my life, and I don't want it taken away. I want to support those in this community the best way I can. And if I have things on my farm that can benefit others, then I will do that. And I think we all have that obligation to see what people need and want, and give them the satisfaction of knowing that they live in a community that they can claim as their own. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. We appreciate your comments. I'll look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion, the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have adjourned the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting. We are again on item G. This is a rezone. All right, current zoning is A20. That's agricultural property. No problem. And the property parcel size is 44.75 acres.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Maybe we'll take a break.
Yep, let's take a quick break.
Okay. When we have two commissioners going.
Let's convene at 25 after. And it's certainly a way to learn a lot more about land use and property rights and other things, and the issues and challenges facing our community. We heard from 20 of you in this meeting. We also heard, sorry, 22 of you in this meeting. We also heard from a number of community members via email and phone calls, so we appreciate those that did reach out and express their concerns and comments. There's a couple of items that I just wanted to make comment on before we get into our debate regarding this item. There was several folks who mentioned the Mountain Green Interchange. That's a project that has been on the UDOT horizon, very, very far out there on the like 40, 50-year plan. This commission has taken a very different approach to that. We did hire a lobbyist group, and we've been lobbying the legislature the last two legislative sessions to get moving on that project. Last legislative session a year ago, we did secure the funding to do the environmental study on the project, which is a big first step, and that is underway currently. We did meet with, at least most of the commission was able to meet with our legislative representatives during the session last week. We went down to the Capitol and sat down with our House and Senate representatives, and that was one of two major issues that we discussed with them specifically was the Mountain Green Interchange. So we've dedicated time and resources to that, and we intend to continue doing that until that does come to fruition. Keep in mind that that interchange and all UDOT or interchange projects, there's an algorithm that they use to determine when it's needed and that sort of thing. And unfortunately, we will never compete with the Wasatch Front, and this is a good thing, but we will never compete with the Wasatch Front in terms of traffic, businesses, homes, et cetera, access by that project. And so when UDOT does their analysis, they're always going to say, well, you know, another interchange in South Jordan probably makes more sense and serves more people than an interchange in Morgan County. So we're constantly fighting that battle, and that's why we've gone the route of working with our state legislative representatives. We do believe that a potential Olympic bid may have some impact on that should the state get that bid. But that's where we stand right now. Wish we had more news to share on that. The environmental study, as I understand it, does have an expiration date, so once it's completed, that really kind of starts a clock, and we hope that that means it'll push the interchange along a little quicker, rather than if they don't get the interchange done within a certain number of years, and I don't remember whether it's five or seven, maybe one of you do.
Three.
Is it only three?
Three.
I think it's five.
Three to five years.
Yeah, I bet it's three to five.
But if it doesn't get done, then they have to redo the environmental study. So the other piece of good news on that is rather than an environmental impact study, they were able to do an environmental assessment, which is a little easier and a little quicker study. So that is underway, and that is a project. The other item that I heard a lot that I want to comment on is related to water. And I just want to make clear that we recognize that water is a finite resource and a resource that is vital. However, Morgan County, the county commission, does not regulate the water in this drainage. It's regulated by Weaver Basin Water. So anytime a developer or a homeowner wants to use the water for whatever use that they're not already allowed, they have to go through Weaver Basin and go through that project. That doesn't mean that we don't care about it, but it means that you won't hear us speaking a lot about water. Essentially, from our perspective, we verify that Weaver Basin has confirmed that there is water available and that the landowner or developer has access and rights to that Couple other comments I just want to make, and then we'll have some more comments from other commissioners. Heard a lot about, or heard several comments about taxes and tax base. That's something that Morgan County struggles with to some degree. And part of what we struggle with is public understanding of what your property taxes fund. Your property tax bill, and you'll hear me bang this drum every budget season, but your property tax bill says Morgan County across the top of it. That's who you pay that bill to, but the vast majority of what you pay in property taxes does not come to Morgan County. It actually goes to the school district. We see about 15% to 17% of what you pay in property taxes comes to the county general fund, and that amount that we receive in the county general fund, it amounts to about 3.3 million. $3.3 million every year. That does not cover the Morgan County payroll. So, most of what we live off of as a county is not property taxes, but other sources that we work with, sales tax being one. And on that note, I would encourage you to spend money in Morgan County because that sales tax stays here rather than going elsewhere. That's also another reason why we are very interested in economic development and commercial development, because we recognize, number one, that takes the property tax burden off of residents and places it on business, businesses that typically don't have children going to school and other needs, but also because we would like to support businesses here within the county. So, this commission has taken a lot of steps to try to advance economic development. We have a couple of different groups, one that works on tourism, another that's dedicated to economic development, and so we work really hard to do that. All right, let's open up for comments. Commissioner Wilson, let's just start with your comments on your end.
Okay. First of all, thank you all for coming. I appreciate all the emails we've received and for what's been talked about here tonight. I'm not a...I am not a politician. I didn't run for office. I ran because I love Morgan County. I've lived here in my entire life, just short of 60 years. This isn't the Morgan I grew up in, I can promise you that. And I remember my dad telling me lots of times, "I wish I could just set a bomb off in the canyon, close it off. We could just live here by ourselves." Yet, I love my neighbors that have moved in, and there's lots of good people that have moved to Morgan, and I appreciate those people, too. I do believe in controlled, measured growth, and I have heard that many times tonight, so thank you for that. I don't like the government telling me what's good for my family. That's one of the reasons I don't love government. We were elected by you, the citizens of Morgan County, and so that is how my votes go, is I try and do what our Morgan County residents want us to do. My feelings are that this is premature. I don't want to rezone an area that is not zoned for something. I think we have plenty of things that are going on right now that will bear fruits and let us know exactly how some of our high-density will work out, whether we'll have enough water. I'd like to see the sewer infrastructure doubled in size like it's going to be shortly before we do some of these large projects. I know we do have a lot of problems that we deal with down in your area, and I appreciate that because I don't have to do that on Highway 66. And so, I know you do deal with a lot of things that we don't have to deal with, and I do drive that road a lot, and I can appreciate what you're saying about that. I think we need to have affordable housing. I would like my kids to be able to live in Morgan County, so I do think there's a time and a place for affordable housing here. I don't know right now. We started out having affordable housing right here in the city, and by the time the project got built out in only two years, it was unaffordable. So, started at low threes and ended up over $400,000. So, we need affordable housing for our children. They want to live here, and so I think there's a place for that. So, I agree with all the things that were said positively and also in favor and against, I should say. So, I just wanted to share with you my feelings, let you know where I'm at on things, and I appreciate you, again, being here.
Commissioner Anderson, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, I might echo a little bit of what Commissioner Wilson's saying. I appreciate all of your concerns and everybody being here tonight. He's got me beat. I'm short of about 50 years of living here, so... You know, my entire...my living all my life has been through civil engineering, so it is based on development. So, that's what I do for a living. I'm very, very interested in how growth happens and that it does happen as correctly as possible, and that's why I ran for this position. We do hear all your comments. I've typed them all up. I was typing as quick as I could. I'm going to send them out to the other commissioners afterwards also. So, we hear all your comments, and we want to take them in and make the best decision we can. Some of my other thoughts, I look at the existing zoning map. I've literally got it in front of me, so I go back and forth between the existing zoning map and then the future land use map and see what's happening there and if that looks like it makes sense or not. As you've all said, there is a lot of development happening. There's a lot of areas that are zoned for future development that we haven't seen anything happen yet. This is a very interesting piece of property. I'd be interested to see how this property progresses in the future, for sure, but I hear all the concerns of water and sewer and traffic. I deal with it daily. I know when there was concerns about traffic that we had about a year ago on Old Highway, we immediately talked to UDOT and had them look into studies and what their concerns were with their section of Old Highway Road. I work with Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District and try and help them with their sewer capacity and issues they have there, so there's a lot of work to be done, and I think I would end with, we are elected by our residents, and we need to make sure that as we're making our decisions, we're listening to our residents and what their concerns are. And so, I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Commissioner McConnell?
So, I'll try to address some of the comments. One of my...I guess my favorite economist says, "There are no solutions. There's only trade-offs." And I appreciate the different comments that have been made. I will start by saying, you can vote me out at the end if you want to, but you won't get a chance because I'm not running again. When I did run for office, twice, I printed up a statement of what my positions were. And one of the questions I answered in that is, "Will I do what the people say?" And my answer was no. "You elect me on the basis of my judgment, and I will listen to you with respect to every issue and your perspectives and points of view, and then I make the best determination I can on the basis of the evidence that's in front of me. That's how I act. And will that be consistent with the majority? I have no idea. I frankly don't know that you represent the majority. You may or you may not." And that's pretty well documented in terms of people that show up for Planning Commission hearings and City Council hearings. People who are opposed generally are more incentivized to show up than people who are neutral or support. You may very well, but I'm not the elusive majority is what I call it. I appreciate what you've said, though, and so I want to talk about the different things. With respect to infrastructure, we do not control the water, and unfortunately, there's multiple water companies in Mountain Green. Where I live, I haven't experienced the shortages of water that you have experienced potentially in other areas of Mountain Green. Our water supply has been good, and frankly, our secondary system has been good throughout the course of the last two summers. We've been able to water much longer than people down in the Wasatch Front, so from my perspective, that's good, given the reduced amount of water. With respect to traffic, anything we do increases traffic. If we put single-family residential homes in there, it will increase traffic. Generally, single-family residential homes, in terms of residential homes generally versus single-family versus multifamily, have a higher traffic count than multifamily units. The average in Utah is about 13 and 1/2 trips per day. If you came to my home when my boys were in high school, a single-family residential home was generating far more than 13 and 1/2 trips per day because they all drove, you know, and I drove, and my wife drove, and if anybody forgot something for school, then there was a second trip to the middle school. So, it happens. There's a lot of driving that occurs. Whether or not that would be more or less than commercial development in that area, I'm not sure. It depends on what commercial development went in. Some of it could generate far more, and some could generate less. The notion of family is important to me. I agree and value that, but I do think that we lack affordable housing, moderate-income housing, inclusionary housing, whatever you want to call it. We lack it in this community and in Mountain Green particularly. It is not affordable by any shape or means. I'm not sure that everything that is proposed to be developed, if it were developed, if it's still going to hit the market hard enough, that there will be sufficient supply to meet the demand, and it may still be expensive. There are multiple projects that have come in with the hope that they could be more affordable. Matt mentioned one in Morgan City. I know the Phase 5 area of the Cottonwoods was hoped to be at a price point that was less and more affordable, but those are going for $600,000, $700,000, and that is not affordable to young people. And I feel an obligation when I took this position with respect to community to think about that long-term future, not just the immediate residents here, but the children that they're having, the young people that they're having, and as they go to school and come back, I would love to have a place that they could afford and come back and be in our community and not in my basement. I will say that I think in terms of the current zones on our books right now, the Town Center Zone presents the greatest opportunity to have the controlled development that you talked about. It has a significant number of requirements and standards. It does require development agreement. That development agreement has to be negotiated with the county. Is it entirely administrative at that point? I think it's, in that case, a blend because they're required to establish certain things in that development agreement, including density, setbacks, architectural standards, and all those other things. And we, as a county commission, have the ability to have our input into that agreement and our say, so I don't view that as a purely administrative decision. I think that's largely a legislative function as we move through and approve. Now, ultimately, if everything lined up and we got everything that we think that zone requires, including the open space requirements which are in it, the zero-scape requirements that are in it, the required commercial elements that are in it, if all of that was being met and satisfied, I think we'd have a hard time not approving the development agreement. But there are a wide variety of standards, and in terms of the zones that we have, if you want something controlled in that area, then I think the Town Center Zone is a better zone than if we were to zone this commercially because it does have open space requirements, it does have connectivity requirements, it has much higher and more developed and robust development standards. Even in terms of multifamily housing, I'm not going to call it high-density. What is referred to in this county as high-density zoning is, at best, medium-density. In anywhere else and in many other parts of the world, it would just be considered low-density townhome projects, but they're required to be...architecturally appear as large, single-family homes. Doesn't necessarily address the number of units created, but they're architecturally required to appear as large homes. So, that's...if I'm going to pick a zone other than a commercial zone to go here, Town Center is the best one that we have on our books right now. With respect to schools, we're not allowed by law to consider the impact on schools. So, I understand the issue. I think that school populations rise and fall over the course of a community as it ages, and then new people come in and younger families and so forth. I'm frankly surprised in my neighborhood at the number of very young families that can afford houses in my neighborhood. I think it's great that they can. It just...I thought we would be a little older than it was when I moved up here, and I was surprised at how well some of them do. It's incredible. With respect to the interchange, the one priority above ours, at least in terms of the northern area legislators, is the completion of the interchange at 89-84. So, they've done a great job of...you know, I love going to work now much better on 89. It's wide, it flows through, it's not even finished, but it's for the last year and a half. It moves much faster, but when I'm coming home, then it's like, it's really great all the way home until you get to the bottom, and then that's where it backs up. That's the next interchange that they're prioritizing. I think that will affect traffic going up and down the canyon, particularly exiting the canyon or leaving the canyon from our side to go down. That does not address when some semi crashes and blocks traffic or, you know, that kind of stuff happens. I drive the road every day, at least twice, you know, coming in and out of Old Highway. I think it needs to be improved. I think we ultimately need to have signalization when that interchange comes in and maybe before if we could potentially get it. I think that would control the flow of traffic. Based on the traffic counts that we have now, which you all believe are excessive, we haven't...we don't warrant that signalization yet. So, what that suggests is we really don't have as much traffic as is needed. I think that in order to support the commercial in the Town Center, that we do need additional units, and from my perspective, if you're going to have additional multifamily housing in the Mountain Green community, this area is a reasonable area for it to be. It's immediately adjacent to what's shown on a Town...I mean, if I'm looking at the Town Center map in our zone, then it's immediately adjacent to the Town Center on its west end, it's immediately adjacent to the Town Center on its north end, and the trail community thing that they've shown goes right up and along its side. Now, it extends beyond that on that north end. It extends beyond it. The notion of renters and owners being less integrated into a community, there have been studies on that, and generally, that hasn't...that doesn't play out. It's commonly said, "It doesn't play out." The airport is not a commercial use. It is quasi-public, I would call it. It's certainly not residential, so I don't mean to be critical in that way, but we actually prohibit commercial uses at the airport. We've got a potential use coming in because they want to do some commercial uses there. There was reference to the DAT. I've seen the DAT. I've reviewed the DAT. It was never formally adopted. I think it was, in some sense, an entirely unrealistic plan. It did have a lot of inline commercial uses, but I don't think that we could ever support that much commercial. At least, we will need a lot more residential base in order to do so. And in part, moving forward, if I'm looking to support the Town Center, which I'm in favor of, I'm very much in favor of having some inclusionary, affordable housing in our community. Like I said, I think that the Town Center Zone is the best zone we have in terms of having control in the development process, and for that reason, I'm generally inclined to support it. Now, I know that's not what everybody here wants to hear, but that's why I gave you a long explanation as to why, because I think you deserve to know why, as your elected representative, I would be inclined to support.
Commissioner Feckel?
You really want to hear from me again?
No.
Okay, then I won't say anything more. No, I have to say a couple of things. I kind of agree with everybody else here in all aspects, but for the public out here, I'm going to put it to you the way I have been able to look at this county for the for the last two years, being in this position. I, for one, do not like high taxes. And I don't think anybody in here does. Knowing what is happening in the county and what nobody wants, I have a little bit of a quandary also. And that is, who really wants economic development? These businesses are not going to come in. And that's what I've been working on for two years. Businesses will not come in here to reside for a long period of time if we do not have homes that will support them. So we, as a public, if we don't go with maybe some commercial or some development of homes, our taxes are going to go up. Unfortunately, we have chosen, as Commissioner McConnell has said before, is that we want to live here in Morgan County, yet we don't want to pay those higher taxes. I personally don't want to pay any taxes, but I have to. And so what I have been doing on the economic development area and the tourism area of this county is to try to help existing economic development occur and tourism to come in. Now, a lot of people are going to say, "Well, I don't want any tourism here." Well, we already have it. What I'm wanting is for when they come here, I want the tourism to be able to have some kind of support. If we, as a public, are saying, "We don't want high taxes. We don't want tourism, but we do want economic development," we're not going to have anything. So there's a lot of balance that has to come into government and this government. Commissioner McConnell was mentioning that even in the new plan, which I've gone back and reviewed it, the new plan says that this area, if it's approved, could be used for flex commercial and residential, which indicates that, according to that, it's average density, not high-density. And everybody says it this way, "Not in my backyard." The NIMBY effect. You're right. It's not in my backyard. But, you know, they can down in Mountain Green. They can have it. Or in Porterville, you can have it. Or in Croydon, I'm sorry, but you can have it up there too. But then they say the same thing you're saying. "Not in my backyard. I don't want that." But we all have to learn to make a balance. And that balance is, are we willing to pay a higher tax to not have them come in? Or are we willing to try to support businesses that come in, whether it be tourism, economic, you know, whatever kind might come in? Because Sinclair cannot handle all of Mountain Green, nor all of the traffic. It's too small. And that's the only thing we've got down there. So what I'm requesting is, I don't want to see anything changed. Sorry. I love this valley. I don't want to see it change. But I want it to be changed in a controlled manner. And I just want us to make sure that that's what we want before we do it. And so as far as issues with water sewer, Commissioner McConnell mentioned them. Absolutely. Everybody I hear out in the hallway says, "Well, we don't have any water in Mountain Green." I'm going to publicly say, based upon everything that I have done and studies in this area, we have more water in Mountain Green than they have in the rest of the state of Utah. It's just you have to get at it. And somebody was saying something about the smells of agriculture. They love their kids to be able to have that, the grandkids. I'm going to tell you from my perspective, I am a farmer. One of these days, I'm going to come in here in my coveralls. But we like that, but yet we don't like that. My neighbor moved into the area right next to my place. I've been farming it for 40 years. And all of a sudden, I had a, you know, I have my corral that has been there forever and I did not plan on changing it. Well, they put up a fence, which is great, but it wasn't a solid fence, just a chain-link fence. So they still had the smells of my corral. They started complaining about those corrals. We got into a fight because they moved in. I was there long before they ever came in, but I was there. So therefore, agriculture has a right in this county and in the state. I used to haul hay at 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night and at 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock in the morning. Because those are the times when you can do it without killing yourself with heat exhaustion. And all these things are happening as far as growth. And I'm sorry I'm taking so much time, Mike, but these are things that we, as a county and people, need to look at. What do we want? And this is where I've had the biggest problem this last week, or last two weeks, three weeks, is what do you want? What I want is what Mrs. Brown wants. She wants to be able to continue to farm until she dies. I want to continue to farm until I die. A lot of other people do. A lot of people want to keep it the way it is or the way it was when they moved here. We have to accept some change. So when you were saying, and congratulations, Commissioner Fackrell, on what you were saying, right now, I'm telling you, even if I vote yes or no for this or something else, I'm just saying that whatever we do or whatever this council, the commission does, we need to work together to control whatever it is that is decided upon. We don't need to fight because if we fight, we're not going to ever get anything accomplished. We are trying to get things accomplished in this county. I have been working my tail off to try to get things to be moving, but not so fast that we, which it has actually, it ended up being too fast, to where we are... Anyway, to where we're too far into the future and we have not really sat down and discussed it. So what I'm asking each of you, whatever way we go with this, I would like you to have the conversations with all of us. Continue to have those conversations, but let's get the facts. And let's also decide what do we want? What do we want? I know Mike Wasuda has gone and said that 30 years ago, we had a plan. That plan is what we in this area want. Well, if that's the plan, then how is it that all the rest of you have come in? Because all of us have come, not all of us, because I've been here longer than Mike. And my wife was born here and she's 66 years old. She was born here. Her parents, that peak up there that says Francis Peak, it was named after her great-grandmother. So as far as accepting change, if the original pioneers in this valley said, "We don't want any change," there would have been 100 people in this county. My wife would have been here and I never would have got here. So we have to be able to look at all these different things as far as change. Now, as far as how I'm going to vote for this, I still haven't decided. I personally, at this time, do not think it is the right answer at this time. I think we need to wait and control the growth. Not saying that this one can't be a controlled growth. But if we do accept it, it would be a Town Center idea where we can do something with it. We can put on these restrictions and what they want. In here, an average density should range from 3 to 15 units per acre. That's it. So if we were to approve this with a 3 to 15 units per acre, that's not as much as what everybody's complaining about. Now, can we help the developers to determine what way they want to go? I'm not sure. I'm concerned about it. So at this point, I'm basically saying that I think we need to work on it before we go and make a final leap into changing everything at this point.
So six or seven years ago, I was serving on the Planning Commission and the county council at the time instructed us to develop a Town Center Zone. And we spent the better part of a year, maybe more than that, Debbie, you might remember, I think it was a little over a year, meeting after meeting, discussing what might be included in that Town Center zoning. At the time, the zoning districts that we had available within our code were commercial or residential and there was no type of mixed-use zoning. And so the Town Center Zone was born specifically for this area of Mountain Green. When I say this area, the Greater Trappers Loop area, maybe I'll call it. And great care was taken at that time to determine what the community would like to see in that area. Down to even, if you go and look at the ordinance, it will show you examples of what the architecture should look like, the colors. It talks about what materials can be used. It's very, very descriptive. And we spent, like I said, over a year doing that. It went through the county council and they debated it for some time and worked on it, tweaked it a little bit and finally put that into our ordinance. I'm a little surprised because I heard from several of you that you would rather see strictly commercial and not residential in the area. And that is a little shocking to me because if you know much about sound zoning principles, at least what's taught at maybe a collegiate level, it tells you that zoning should, you have your commercial areas and then as you move out, you go from higher density to lower density. So typically, surrounding high-density commercial areas, you would have high-density housing and then lower-density housing and then, you know, as you moved out. So, but what I've heard from many of you is, we'd rather just see commercial. I will say this, our commercial zoning does not have requirements in terms of what the buildings need to look like, at least to that degree. It doesn't stipulate the colors of the structures or whether you can use metal siding versus stucco or other very specific architectural design standards that the Town Center zoning has. So from that perspective, I think I agree with Commissioner McConnell that the Town Center zoning is absolutely the best zoning available that would give the most control. Now, that being said, when we had that debate over Town Center zoning, probably the one item that we debated the longest and the most was what percentage of commercial we would require in that zone. And I was of the opinion, and still am, that it should have been a very high percentage. And the reason is, is because there's very, very little space within Morgan County that's suitable to commercial zoning. There's just not a lot of spaces that have the infrastructure. Typically, you've got to have a sewer system to support commercial zoning. Morgan City has that. Mountain Green has that. The rest of the county does not. Freeway access, rooftops, et cetera. And so I was a proponent of, you know, I wanted it to be all commercial. We heard from a lot of developers at the time and those developers said, "Look, you don't have the rooftops to do this. And you can zone it all commercial, but the businesses won't come." And I heard some of you say, you know, "Well, we had this plan and we wanted these businesses to come and we wanted this Town Center to come." Well, Morgan County does not control that. We don't go out and say, "Developer, come and build your business here." The developers acquire the property, they come to Morgan County and they say, "This is what we want to do." And then we decide if that's appropriate or not and if it's, you know, fits within our code. And so to me, this is a little bit of a challenge because, hey, if you want to see commercial development solely there, I'm all for it. That improves our tax base. That's wonderful. I would bet that many of you would be very unhappy with the look of the commercial development versus Town Center zoning, where we can be very specific about the look. Our other zoning does not allow that or does not require that. So that being said, I guess, I don't know which way I'm going to vote at this point, but certainly I would love to see more commercial development within the county. It would sure help our tax base and help keep our property taxes low, lower. Okay, any other comments or debate?
So if we leave it the same, A20 and commercial, how much of that is in commercial currently?
The current zoning map?
Yeah, Josh.
Josh, can you tell us what's currently zoned commercial of that property? None. It's all A20 currently.
It's all A20.
It's just the future land use map has all of it going to a commercial zoning district.
And how many acres of undeveloped Town Center do we have?
Undeveloped? That's a good question.
Future?
You mentioned there's about 80 acres total in that area.
It looks like there's a total of about 80. The future land use map shows currently about 80, approximately. I'm just guessing.
And of that, so the Rome development is largely underway. Now, it's not been fully developed, but it's largely underway. I don't know how many acres that is.
That's 18. 18 for the commercial part.
Just the commercial?
Yeah, the whole acreage is 53.
But the whole thing is zoned Town Center, 53?
53.
So it's got to be more than 80 acres then?
Yeah.
It might be.
If that 50, if Rome is 50 on...
It might be.
In and of itself. Okay.
May I put, and it may die, and that's fine. I move that we postpone this for a period of three months so that that way we can determine if the community is willing to work together. And if they're not, I mean, this is only 40 of them here out of a total of 4,197 people in Mountain Green in the Town Center. So I'm just putting that proposal out there. And I will make that motion if that's an option for us to do.
It's absolutely an option. I'm going to ask you a question.
Go ahead.
Just for my own...
Clarification.
Whatever is, to you, what does that look like in terms of understanding if the community is willing to work together?
What I'm seeing is, is maybe we need to have discussions with the people in their area. Maybe we need to complete this plan. Because if we complete this study and we agree upon this study, this study actually says that should be Town Center along those average densities that I've mentioned. And if that's the case, then there should be no reason why we can't rezone it. The other thing is, is are we lacking in some of our code within some of these areas of Town Center? Maybe the Town Supportive or whatever it might be. Are we lacking in that at this point? And so that was my reason for maybe postponing it just for a period of time to get it all straightened out, figured out, talk with the community a little more because we have not gone... We've had that one in place since 2010. because we have not gone, we've had that one in place since 2010. Things have changed. Sure, the old residents still want that, but I would like to at least have more discussions with the community and, you know, let them see what would happen if we bring in more homes or less homes, if we bring in more commercial or no commercial. I don't know, just some thoughts. Because if we deny it...
You think that is an official motion? I think you did, but...
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion? So the motion fails for lack of a second?
Okay, so that's fine. I just tried.
Nope, that's okay.
And another reason, because if we deny this, if we denied it, just say for instance, we did deny it, if we denied this rezon until we get further, it's going to take them, they're going to have to come back, they can't come back for two years with the same proposal.
They could come back with the commercial zone, or if we adopt that area plan and we go to that town center flex area for this, and we were able to actually adopt that zone within that two-year period, then they could come back for that as well.
Okay, all right. Good to know.
Okay. Someone might have to make a motion here. I can't make the motions.
I know you can.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the M.D. Nelson rezon map amendment, application number 22.065, changing forty-four point seven-five acres from A20 to town center based on the findings listed in the staff report dated March 7, 2023.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay. That motion fails for lack of a second.
So here's some, maybe just quick thoughts. I don't think any of the residents, except from what I heard, won. Whether it's commercial or town center, it's not going to matter. They just, there's too many issues with the growths that they've seen. There's some that have moved in forty, fifty years ago that just want to keep it the way it was when they moved in as best as possible. So I don't think that's going to matter. I guess the hard decision I'm having in my head right now is not knowing what's going to happen. So we're trying to make, and I know it's per ordinance and per law, if you want to say that, but we're trying to make a decision right now on something that we're not sure how it's going to look. I actually do agree with Commissioner McConnell where I do feel like versus commercial zone of the future land use map versus commercial, I'd actually rather see the town center zoning. But I'm still just uncomfortable not having a clue what that means. We don't know yet.
That's right.
And for us, for me, to make a decision right now to say, "Yeah, let's go ahead and move forward," without knowing, and I know the process, I know that's how it works, but that's the struggle that I'm having. I don't know what the very easterly corner right across from Jesse Archibald's house is going to look like. I have no idea. I don't know what the other end's going to look like. Yeah, just...
And I like the town center zoning for the control we have over it, but I don't like the timing of this. So that's my feeling.
So when it comes to controlling development and moving forward, there's only two parties really that can do this. There's the community, and we can go try to float a bond for, call it seventy-five million dollars, to put in the infrastructure and put in these roads, assuming we could acquire the rights of way within that seventy-five million dollars and cover it, and put in all of this stuff, and then invite people to come. I find that incredibly unlikely in this community, that we would have support for that kind of a bond issuance. We'd have to, you would have to vote on it. That's something that we wouldn't be able to do on our own. You would all have to vote on it, and I can't imagine that you would approve it. Maybe I'm wrong, okay? Or we have to be responsive to developers that come in and seek to develop land within these areas. If this was somebody asking for town center in an area that was, you know, not adjacent to the freeway exit that everybody wants us to get in order to mitigate the traffic, I would be saying, "No, wrong place. It's not just the wrong time, it's the wrong place." This, but between, you know, old highway and the freeway with the drop-off of the elevation down to the freeway location, to me, this is one of the best places we could find to put in this kind of development. If it's the wrong time, it's the wrong time.
How many things have been approved already? How many?
Well, that depends on what you mean by approved. If you look at the zoning of a jurisdiction, in our case, the county, we've approved residential units and various areas of density across the entire county.
Correct.
That's the way it is. And so this will increase the potential density within this area. There's no doubt because it's agricultural now, and we would be increasing that density. I don't look at the density that would be proposed and/or allowed in the town center and think that's going to throw us over the top of our ability to move forward in a reasonable way. Now, if Snow Basin develops everything they have entitlements for under their development agreement, if they did that all at the same time, yeah, we would have much higher demand. I don't see that from them either. They are moving forward, but it's all in Weber County. I frankly would have liked them to have done it in Morgan County. I would love to be selling tickets for Snow Basin to be selling lift tickets in Morgan County because then we generate that sales revenue. We have the traffic, you know, we bear the burden of it, and it comes in and it goes out. Unless you're willing to stop at the world's greatest corn dog or Sinclair for chicken fingers, we don't capture any of that revenue. We probably get a little from the fuel tax, you know, there, the Sinclair, they're so limited in terms of the commercial opportunities. And I just don't know that without moving forward in response to the development request actually in front of us, and with people willing to move forward, that it's ever going to happen. Look, I wish the Johnson piece was already developing. I do, because then maybe we would have a better crystal ball than we have right now. I understand we can't see entirely into the future, but I'm just saying it on the basis of my experience and on this commission and my experience professionally, this was the approach I'd move. My motion died for a lack of a second, though, so somebody else will have to do it.
You know, we had a county council person previously that Robert and I served with, and every time we had discussions about Mountain Green and development of Mountain Green, he would say, "Well, we're talking about designing the Mountain Green city center," right? Because someday, Mountain Green will incorporate. The fact of the matter is, though, without commercial development, Mountain Green will never incorporate, and it's because you don't have the tax base to do it. The study's been done twice now, and both times it came back and said, "There's not enough commercial development here. Your taxes would be outlandish if you wanted to incorporate." Ultimately, I would love to see Mountain Green incorporate because for a number of reasons. It would give you very local control, which I think is wonderful. It would also be a good thing for, I think, Morgan County in that we would be able to be alleviated of some roads and some other things that we currently have responsibility for. But that being said, until there's enough commercial growth in that area, it will not happen because there's just not the tax base to support it. So this is a tough one for me. If it were up to me, we'd see lots and lots of commercial. I don't think that's a feasible thing, and I don't think that that's what people really would want in the end, but that's my two cents on it.
May I ask a question?
You sure can.
If, under the town center agreement, if they, I mean, because everybody's, some people have mentioned it to me, if we, if they haven't put in any commercial in the next five years after zoning at town center, does it turn to residential?
I think that was in the development agreement for Rome.
That was in the development agreement for Rome, but I don't think that's in the zoning. Josh, do you know the answer to that off the top of your head?
Yeah, I left that up in the last meeting. That is not in zoning town. If it's part of the development agreement and the negotiations with the developer here, then that's an expiration date within the development agreement. So otherwise, our zoning doesn't say that.
So if it were, it would only be under the development agreement that that could be allowed, and that doesn't mean we have to allow it, it just was for the Rome subdivision.
Okay, because I'm just worried about, we may not get the starting of the interchange. Hopefully, we do by then, but it may not happen. And so I'm just worried about whether or not that would become an issue or not. Because I don't want to have it turn all the way into townhomes or single-family homes or whatever it might be. I don't want to see it happen that way unless, because I want to see some commercial development. I want to see economic development. And I mean, for us to try to bring in economic development, it does not work unless we have people. There's a point in this new study that they came up with, for us to bring in a store, just for your information and everybody else, these guys have already read it, but for your information, Lee's Market is taking a big leap to come to this valley. Because they were saying in the study, for us to be able to handle like a neighborhood Walmart, that kind of a scenario, take us twenty-two hundred and thirty-seven more homes. Was it homes or people? I think it was homes.
Rooftops, yeah.
Yeah, rooftops. And to only bring in a restaurant would only be a hundred and sixty-seven homes. Now, yeah, we have that many on the books, but we don't have anything starting yet. Some of these developments have been here long before we came in. I don't know if it was before you two got here or not, but they've been there a long time, and nothing's happening. So I'm just kind of curious, why are we putting all this under the books and not having anything happen? I know economic times are economic times, but I don't know. I just don't think it's the right time. I move to, if I table it, then I lose it, right?
Yeah, tabling effectively kills a motion. Postponing would hold it open.
Okay. I move that we postpone it since we're at a deadlock.
I move that we deny it.
Okay, so we...
So we've got conflicting motions. I think his was first.
But mine was already denied before, so now you, you know...
Well, you made another motion. Is there a second on Commissioner Fackrell's motion?
The postponement.
The postponement. Okay.
Okay.
Motion fails for lack of a second. Commissioner Wilson, did you have a motion?
I move we deny M.D. Nelson rezon map amendment, application number 22.065, changing forty-four point seven-five acres from A20 to TC based on the following findings. In the staff report, I guess. I just, my reasoning, I've already stated. I think it's premature. I think we need to develop some of the infrastructure that is already in motion, and we need to see that we have the infrastructure to support such a thing. I'm not against the town center. I'm against it right now. And I know Robert feels differently than I do, but that's my feelings.
And I think we would want to just clarify that...
Yeah, you can't base it on the findings in the staff report because the findings in the staff report are approval.
So I think you'd have to base it upon the Planning Commission's recommendation for denial.
Based on the Planning's recommendation for...
Planning Commission's.
Planning Commission's recommendation for denial.
And you can make whatever other findings you want to make or propose, Lou.
Do you want to add anything else to that?
No, I've already added enough tonight.
Is there a second on the motion? Gentlemen, we're struggling tonight, huh?
Okay, I have one more idea.
All right. So the motion fails for lack of a second. Commissioner McConnell?
I think we either need to, if, I won't postpone it for the reason that you stated. I don't mind other community involvement, I'm not saying that. I don't know what that means or how it would be structured. And frankly, you guys have done a good job of articulating all of the issues in opposition. For Wasatch Peaks, you know, I don't, I think I sat through maybe twenty-four hours of hearings, twenty-five hours of hearings. After the first hour and a half or two, there were really never any new substantive issues that were raised. So I appreciate your statements, and I think you've articulated the basis for why you would be opposed to it. The only other thing we could do, and this would take cooperation from the developer, it's only a possibility, and I think they would need to want to do it this way, is if we postponed, the development agreement is not required until they do their first land use application. But if they wanted to advance some of their planning effort and do a development agreement so that we could get a vision of what it was they were doing and approve that as part of the rezon itself, then that's a possibility. The problem with that is you guys end up spending money, and I don't know what your timeframes are in terms of your purchase of the property, when your potential closings are, and whether that would even be something we could do within that timeframe. But a denial, particularly in Morgan County, is two years to come back on the town center zone. There is the potential of adopting the area plan and that flex area being adopted, but it's going to take time. So that's just an opportunity. And I would be willing to postpone it till the next meeting if they wanted to consider
But without a public hearing next time?
So, I mean, that's a thought, we could postpone it till the next meeting and allow the applicant to have some thought about it. I don't expect them to make a decision on that or to, you know, here and now. I think that's something that deserves some time to reflect.
No, I agree. That's why I'd be willing to postpone till the next meeting to let them have that opportunity to consider that. And maybe, Garrett, if you think I'm running far afield, then you can let me know, so...
I don't see an issue.
I can second that if they will agree with that. But that wasn't a motion, so...
Well, we don't know if they're going to agree to that. We're just talking about potentially postponing.
Right, I know. But I'm just saying, I would second that if they could agree to that.
So I'll make a motion that we postpone this item till the second meeting in March for, well, I'll just make that motion, and then you understand what I'm talking about, and we can have that conversation.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to postpone till the second meeting in March. Any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for bearing with us. If you haven't noticed, we've agonized over some of these decisions. Thank you. We will move into commissioner comments, following which, we do have a request to go into a closed session to discuss criminal litigation, and then we will adjourn our meeting. If you would like to leave, please do so quietly so we can continue. Okay, commissioner comments, Commissioner Wilson, we'll start with you.
Let's not start with me. I've got to clear my head and think of...
Okay, Commissioner...
I'll go next.
Okay, go ahead, Garrett.
Okay.
Now where I can find all my notes.
You know, I actually said I'd go next. I'm looking for the bill real quick. I've got it here right in front of me.
I've talked out, so...
House Bill 351, House Bill 351 did pass. If you remember, that is the county recorder bill. I just want to bring it up. It's not only going to affect our county recorder, but all. But I really, I really think, they went through, I want to say, four substitutions. So they really discussed with, I know the county recorders... So they really discussed with, I know the county recorders had a group, UAC, City, we all had groups that were talking to them, and I, it's basically going to be an oversight board, and I can't remember who's going to be on the board or how many. And then they're going to help the county recorders, help regulate what they're supposed to be doing and the boxes they're supposed to be checking off. So I think that was a long thought-through and bill that has been approved. Croydon Bridge, both Commissioner Newton and I have sent different emails to UDOT. We're still pushing pretty hard on, they're looking at getting a temporary bridge, because they might not be able to get their drilling done in time in the river before the floods come. So we're pushing very hard on saying, what's going to be our contribution, what's going to be the contractor's contribution? Because their schedule was, they were supposed to be out of the river in time, and they have not met that schedule.
Are we coordinating with the emergency manager on that in particular?
Yeah, he's been involved in all the meetings, along with our Public Works Director. We've kept the cement plant in all of those meetings, so they're well aware of what's going on.
Yeah, he's been in all of them.
And I'll also add that our emergency services, or our fire and ambulance, have been well involved in that as well, because there is concern of being able to get into Croydon should there be an emergency. So there are contingency plans in place, and they're well aware of how long those need to continue.
One of our biggest concerns now with that project is a bypass road. By the time that bridge, we were hoping it'll get here by early summer, we don't know. But by the time the bridge gets there, with the temperatures warming up, and the trucks going from 30 a day to 100 a day from the cement plant, that road, the word I used was unpassable. I just, I don't even know if people will be able to pass if they don't do any kind of work on the road. So we're really pushing UDOT also to say, hey, how are we going to address this? Because if the contractor would have gotten their job done in time, it would have been beat up, but I think we could have fixed the road.
You would have had the time to fix the road.
Correct.
And with less demand.
I will tell you, yesterday, I drove my Subaru car over that road, and there's a spot that's now dirt, and there was a car coming the other way, so I couldn't go around, and I scraped bottom on my car going through there. So that's the point we're at. Now, that happens to be on the Summit County side, which is where the vast majority of the damage is currently. But it's a concern, because that's, right now, again, we're at 30 trucks a day in and out of the cement plant. They're going to move to 100 trucks a day starting the first of April.
And will Summit County even prioritize that?
So Summit County had planned to repave the road, is my understanding. They put that off, knowing that this project is going to happen, and they intended to repave it this summer, just like we intended to repave the road.
But when we say repave, an overlay.
Yes, an overlay, not construction.
And now it's deteriorating enough to...
Yep. So we did, Austin did fly the road. Did I tell you this, Mike?
No.
Austin did fly the road before the construction happened.
With our drone.
With our drone. So we've got a copy of that video, so does Summit County. We gave a copy to them. So we've got that. So we're, we're doing our best to protect county's interest, as far as that's concerned.
Thank you, Charlie.
Those are the major updates I have.
Are there LDs in that contract?
Yeah, they're not, they don't even, I think it's 750 or even 1,000, but they don't even, just doesn't pertain, really. That's too minimal, so.
Has Austin informed you about Weber Basin's plan to flush the river and send a bunch of water down?
Yeah, I don't know. Technically, I don't think they flush the river.
Not flush, but like...
But they release, release some folk, yeah.
You didn't mention that tonight.
Think it's supposed to happen, latest I've heard is first week in April. But they, they've got to be careful, because depending on how the rain comes down, depends on how much they can allow to come through.
Just as long as they're updating the bridge, you know, I think that'll...
The email we got from UDOT today said that they had been in contact with Weber Basin, and Weber Basin indicated that that would occur around the first of April.
Yeah, they, Weber Basin talks too often.
They were going to do it starting first of March, and then they moved to the 15th of March, and yeah, now they're...
So we have three projects in the river right now. Croydon Bridge, Young Street Bridge, and then the Boar project there on 84, so in Mountain Green. So there are three projects in the river. I think the Boar project is supposed to be out in time, and then I think the city has worked around their bridge project, so it's really just down to the Croydon Bridge project.
Just as long as everyone's aware that that's coming, I'd hate for them to start sending water.
We have, we have many emails sent that are making them aware, so, yeah. Yep. That's all I've got.
Thank you. I don't have anything other than what I chimed in with on that, so...
I'm talked out.
Yeah, I'm just going to give you an update on a few things. That email we got on the sage grouse habitat, that was to go into the state plan and federal even though it all occurs on private ground. So that's part of the state sage grouse habitat. If there is any area that is a specific, which is a breeding ground, then before anybody can develop those areas, they would have to go to and get a permit from the DWR to be able to develop on that property. So that's one requirement. The same with up at East Canyon currently, on Golden Hills, has to be done again. They did not get a permit, as far as I know, to be able to build up there.
I appreciate you stepping in, Blaine, and saying, I am the person who's been working on this, so I'll continue to do it. I owe you. Get you a dollar or something.
Thank you, Jared. All right. Also, we did receive another grant this week. We were informed of it this week, or last week. A $30,000 grant that has no match to it for the broadband, to plan how we can get to every single home. Because the last time, when they were up here, they says, we only have 6% of our county that's not covered. And I says, that's a bunch of bull. And that bull is, I says, we need to find out exactly who has the ability to have internet, who can have internet, you know, how affordable internet and so forth. And I says, so we needed this grant, and they decided to give it to us. So on Friday, I'm meeting with them to discuss exactly how that's going to work.
Do they consider cell coverage as coverage?
No.
Okay.
No.
But they do consider wireless coverage.
They do consider wireless, and they do not consider satellite. So they don't want us to have, they want to have fiber throughout the county. So if they're going to have us do fiber, we got to have money. So that's something I've been working on also with that.
How much money have we gotten, including the ARPA dollars, that we've given to broadband and internet? I guess the concern I have is, if that total was 600, 700,000, I don't know how that was...
640,000 to Beehive, and 100,000 to Liberty. Liberty has more coverage.
740,000.
So if we've spent 740, and I know it probably hasn't been for the same things, do we really think 30's going to...
No, but 30 is going to help with the plan. It's going to help us to...
It's strictly for planning, not for...
Yeah, well, it's actually what we're trying to do with it is, in the grant that we submitted, we submitted to have people on the ground go to every single home that is not serviced by internet at this point, by the different companies that we know of, and find out, okay, why do you not have internet? Is it because of cost? Is it because of, you know, you can't get it? Or is it because I don't even want it? Because I've got one person in Porterville, right on the top of the hill, could have internet glory. She does not want internet, period.
Is that your wife?
No. My wife wants it.
Well, I mean, the take-up rate, you know, has been frankly disappointing. I mean, we spent money to run that wire on the poles, and the take-up rate is not good, according to what I've heard.
That's right.
You know, and, I mean, I wish we would have spent the money to have them underground it to my house and up that road, because I think they would have frankly had a better take-up rate.
Yeah. And see, there's Croydon. Croydon, they took All West, all the way up to the business that was there. But when I talked, I mean, talking to the residents, the residents say, well, they said they would come back and finish it. Well, I talked to Jack, whatever it is, from All West, and he said, no, they've just not requested it. And I says, I've got all, I've got people galore, all of them out there are saying, how come I can't get the internet? So this is all part of that study. It says that they're already available to have internet. It's covered, according to the state, state maps. It's all covered, but it's not covered. And so that's some of the areas that we're trying to get. Some of the areas up in Highlands is the same way.
So with this, do we need to go find somebody to do this, or is this, this grant paying somebody that's already in place that will come do it? Or do we need to...
That's what we've got to decide tomorrow. I mean, on Friday, when I meet with them.
Okay. So they give us some options and say, we've either got somebody, or you need to find somebody.
That's right. I mean, to me, in my opinion, let's spend 10,000, if I can give it as a fundraiser to people to go out and actually go and survey each home. If that's the way, we've got to do it. I don't know the legalities on that, but we've got to somehow get to every single home in this county and find out why. If they want internet, why they can't, or why they don't have internet. So that's a part of the plan. Because 6% of this county, I know is not the answer. Because where they say it's along Highway 66, say, oh, it's all covered. No, it's not covered. You've got people galore up there that are still begging for internet. So we're working on it. And of course, with the snows, it's kind of difficult to put a lot in. So in the, in the summer, when the spring, the snow goes away, would be, anyway, we might get some more work done. Also, the chamber has asked for the commission to, to support or come up with a team to be in the golf tournament coming up in June. I cannot golf, so I can be a caddy.
What are they asking us to do?
Play golf.
Play golf.
I did last year, and I'm going this year.
You're going to this year?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, if you guys supply a team, then we don't have to.
Oh, I can get a team.
Okay. Well, that would be good, then.
Is that what they're asking for?
Yeah.
They want a team.
Yeah, okay. All right. If you need me to be a candidate, I'll do it, just to support them. Also, we have, and I don't know if...
No, obviously.
Let's, let's bring it up in Commissioner's comments.
I don't know if you, Mike, or Jared have done anything, or if we want to do anything with the Representative Moore's grant appropriations.
I don't know why not, if we have a good project.
Do we have a good project?
Mountain Green Interchange.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually.
And I think that might be a good one. So now who's going to ride it? You want James to ride, or do you want us to?
I would ask James to ride it. That's part of his...
James who?
James Teaver.
He's a grant writer?
No.
Well, his...
His job is that.
His job is supposed to, was supposed to be helping us with the interchange, so I put that on him. Whether he writes it or whether he contracts that out, I guess is up to him.
Let's see if he can get it done for us. It'd be interesting.
Okay. Also, after talking in our trails meeting last time, I complained again after you had left. I complained to Chris Chestnut about how come the city is meeting with the UDOT all the time, and we're not? And so they set up a time to meet with them, again, if you'd like. It's April 24th at 3:30 PM, if anybody wants to join.
Can you send out, can you send a link or an invite?
I will. Okay. And...
Is that a journal?
Yes. Complete journal. And, anyway, that's good enough for now. I've got a few more pages, but...
Are they adding, they're updating that trails plan, and then you want it on, because you asked me to get it on the agenda, but we're waiting.
That's right. That's right.
What's your thoughts on, because I have had zero time, but what's your thoughts on the RFP for the landscape design for the dome? If we just have, like, did you get it taken care of?
No, I still need to come to you and have you help me with the fini, the finalization of the numbers.
Instead of us trying to get it together, are you okay if we just have Wasatch Civil put it together? Because they've done that stuff before, and they're hired consultant.
You mean, the design?
No, the RFP.
The RFP?
Correct.
Good. I know I've got a meeting with them on Friday also, with Distorwors, and they were going to put it together, finship, finalize it with the new person.
I think if we have them, I don't think it'll take them too long just to throw an RFP together. They've got a landscape design guy on them.
Why don't we ask them? I don't know how much it'll cost us, but it comes from the project.
It shouldn't cost much. They might do it for marketing purposes.
Okay. Can you talk to them on that?
Yeah, I'll call them tomorrow.
Thank you. That would help me out a bunch.
Yep.
And then, when we go into executive session, I'd like to talk to you all about land acquisition.
Sounds like we are ready to make a motion to move into our closed session for the purpose of discussing...
Didn't that one...
No.
He was tapping out over here.
You took my time.
I am so sorry, Matt.
That's all right.
It's 10 minutes before your bedtime.
No, my bed thing went off. It just went off.
Closed session to discuss the acquisition or disposition of real property, as well as imminent or pending, sorry, pending litigation.
So move.